Bienvenidos, bienvenidos a la reunión de la Cámara de Cuidado de la Corte de la Cisdeportiva de Hafun. El martes 16 de julio de 2024. ¿Pueden dar un aprobación?
Miembro del Consejo de Corte Brownstone.
Aquí.
Miembro del Consejo de Corte Penrose.
Aquí.
Miembro del Consejo de Corte Riddick.
Aquí.
Vicemayor Rarbeck.
Aquí.
Mayor Jimenez.
Aquí.
Tienes la palabra.
Gracias. ¿Podemos hacer un juramento, por favor? Gracias, gracias. ¿Podemos hacer una modificación para aprobar la agenda, por favor?
Se ha movido.
Segundo. ¿Rocco?
Miembro del Consejo de Corte Brownstone.
Sí.
Miembro del Consejo de Corte Penrose.
Sí.
Miembro del Consejo de Corte Riddick.
Sí.
Vicemayor Rarbeck.
Sí.
Mayor Jimenez.
Sí.
La modificación se lleva.
Gracias. Tenemos una presentación... ...del Medio Coast.
Hola, soy Scott Bullinger del Consejo de Cuidado de la Comunidad del Medio Coast y gracias por invitarme. Y me gustaría darles una rápida actualización sobre lo que está sucediendo en la región sin incorporación de Hafun Bay. Así que lo primero que quiero mencionar es que la renovación de la escuela secundaria El Granada está en progreso y fui por allí hoy. Y parece que ya se ha construido un nuevo edificio que no había visto hace unas semanas, así que eso es emocionante. Lo siguiente que quiero mencionar son los planes para la nueva estación de fuego en el parque Moss Beach que han sido aprobados. Y van a establecer una estación temporal detrás del oficio del sheriff en el parque Moss Beach. Y el oficio del sheriff va a ser temporalmente mudado a la vieja estación de fuego El Granada. El Proyecto de Estación de Fuego de la Corte de Burnham ha extendido su periodo de comentario público, así que si quieren decir algo o quieren hacer alguna sugerencia a eso, el tiempo es ahora y creo que solo durará otra semana. La Comisión de Planificación de las Montañas de Monterrey ha aprobado la licencia para la torre, la Torre Americana, en la parte superior de la montaña. Pero no han aprobado el plan de mantenimiento de la carretera, así que eso está en progreso. Ha habido mucha discusión en el Medio Coast sobre lo que pasa durante la mantenimiento de esa carretera, así que estamos interesados en tratar de involucrarse en el proceso de mantenimiento de esa... ...esa ecología muy especial que hay en la montaña. Y eso es todo lo que tengo para hoy. Gracias.
Gracias. ¿Comentarios, preguntas del consejo? No, gracias. Vamos a pasar a los anuncios. Tenemos varias cosas sucediendo en nuestra comunidad. Sí, preguntas. ¿Alguien me vio correr el domingo por la calle, corriendo con un caballo? Lo viste corriendo el caballo. ¿Fue usted quien estaba ayudando?
No.
Wow. ¿Todo está bien? El caballero estaba bien. De hecho, el caballo se alejó del trailer, se desprendió del trailer y se quedó corriendo. Así que no hubo heridas. El caballo estaba un poco nervioso. Gracias a los diputados, los diputados del sheriff que vinieron a ayudar. Estábamos tratando de evitarlo porque él estaba hacia esa dirección y al mediodía fue... Fue divertido, pero yo no corro usualmente, pero vi que el caballo corría. ¡Espera, ¿dónde está el caballo? Vale, gracias. Así que tenemos, veamos, tenemos el evento que viene el 20 de julio, el mercado de pop art. El centro de oportunidades del costado del mar es el 637 Main Street, justo al lado del Banco de América. Es un nuevo centro. Tenemos la Chama de Comercio, Renaissance, que está haciendo el mercado de pop art, Job Train y incubador. Así que si tienes la oportunidad, por favor, ven y visita. Hay cuatro grupos que están trabajando realmente con nuestra comunidad bajo la iniciativa de desarrollo económico, que tenemos aquí en el costado. Por favor, ven y visiten. También tenemos el 3 de agosto, tenemos una feria de empleos de carrera, abierta en el mismo lugar, el 637 Main Street. Es un Job Train que está haciendo la feria de carreras. También Renaissance estará presente, la Chama de Comercio estará presente también. Así que nos gustaría unirnos a nosotros. Déjame ver el tiempo, de 11 a 3 el 3. Y tenemos el 6 de agosto, la noche nacional. ¡Es hora de fiesta! Así que por favor, no olviden que es un día de reuniones. Así que estamos cancelando la reunión para que podamos celebrarlo con ustedes. Cinco de nosotros nos gustaría fiñar, así que asegúrense de enviar la invitación y vamos a parar y saludar. Gracias. El 10 de agosto, días de vacaciones. Días de los caballos. También está sucediendo en Hafun Bay. Es un evento que está sucediendo en el costado. Esperamos ver cerca de 200 caballos alrededor de Hafun Bay. Hay un evento que está sucediendo. Van a haber dos bandas live en el depósito de tren en el Canyon de Higgins. La ruta de los caballos es Maine, South Maine, hasta la calle Kelly, a la playa. También popular, a la playa Coastal Trail. Puedes ver algunos caballos alrededor de Redondo y las bandas van a estar jugando una hora en la ciudad, en Hafun Bay y en Agudtra, al mediano. Todavía estamos trabajando en el tiempo. Y luego la otra banda va a estar jugando en el, en realidad, en el depósito de tren. Es una banda country western y también una banda mexicana. El evento esperamos ver algo de comida disponible y como dije, mucho caballo. Así que eso es lo que tenemos hasta ahora. Gracias y pasemos a cualquier informe de sesiones cerradas.
Gracias, señor y consejo. El consejo se reunió en sesión cerrada esta noche para discutir dos temas. El primer tema fue una conferencia con negociadores de propiedad real acerca de la propiedad de la calle Kelly 555 para discutir los términos de alquiler. Y el segundo tema fue una conferencia con el consejo legal acerca de la litigación existente, el caso de la ciudad de Hafun Bay contra Thomas Gearing. Nada de informes de sesión cerrada. Gracias.
Gracias, Catherine. Pasamos a los actualizaciones de la ciudad.
Gracias, señor jefe. El único update que daré es un poco más de detalle sobre la noche nacional. Como mencionó el jefe, el 6 de agosto es la noche nacional. Es una celebración en la que la ciudad participa cada año. Se ha planeado realmente traer a la comunidad con la policía, pero definitivamente se ha ampliado a todos nuestros primeros respondientes y funcionarios locales. La ciudad apoya a los partidos locales para hacer esto y si van a nuestro sitio web y... ¿Hay una bandera, Jessica, para eso? ¿Lo sabes? Okay, podemos crear una bandera para hacerlo fácil de encontrar, pero si solo van a nuestro sitio web y buscan la noche nacional, irán a la página web. Pueden inscribirse para hostear una fiesta de bloque. También hay una mapa allí que continuamos actualizando que muestra dónde están los partidos de bloque. Y si hay uno cerca de ti, ya sabes, solo vayan a esa fiesta esa noche y tendrá la dirección. Oh, hay una bandera. Gracias. Y habrá visitas por el consejo municipal, por los personal, por nuestros primeros respondientes, por el equipo de cuidados. Y realmente la intención es que todos ustedes se reunan con sus vecinos, sepan el otro en una hermosa noche de agosto y tengan buena interacción con algunos de tus líderes civiles. Así que una vez más, vayan a nuestro sitio web. Hay una bandera que puede llevarlos a la página web para más detalles y esperamos que muchas personas participen. Es realmente un evento bien amado. Gracias.
Gracias, Matthew. Pasamos a la publica. Tenemos a Alicia Akel. Por favor, venga a la sala. Sí, por supuesto. Queremos ver quién eres.
Gracias por invitarnos aquí. Mi nombre es...
¿Puedes...?
Lo siento. There you go. Gracias por invitarnos aquí. Mi nombre es Alicia Akel y soy la gerente de la nueva Banca Chase que viene a tu ciudad. Y estamos aquí solo para presentarnos. Tengo aquí a algunos de mis socios conmigo y solo queremos agradecerles por dejarnos venir. Voy a estar en el Job Train, teniendo mi booth porque estamos contratando local, así que por favor, denle a todos que voy a estar allí el 3 de agosto, pero voy a pasarlo a mis socios.
Hola a todos. Mi nombre es Ramón Olmos y estoy con el grupo de banca de negocios de Chase Bank.
Hola a todos. Mi nombre es Juan Carlos. Soy un asesor financiero y voy a trabajar con Alisha aquí. Oh, el micrófono. Así que mi nombre es Juan Carlos. Soy un asesor financiero y voy a trabajar con Alicia aquí en la granja local.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Adam Green. He estado en la empresa durante diez años. He estado en Hafun Bay desde 2012, así que voy a cubrir esta granja unos días o dos por semana y trabajo en San Mateo principalmente, pero muy feliz de venir a Hafun Bay, así que gracias a todos.
Bueno, gracias y bienvenidos a Hafun Bay.
Muchas gracias. La granja se espera que se abre la primera semana de noviembre.
¿Dónde vas a estar?
Estamos en el centro de la tienda de Hallmark, en realidad. Me paré antes para ver la construcción y parece bastante bonita, pero sí.
En el pueblo de Strawberry Fields.
Sí.
Gracias.
Gracias. Pasamos a Paul Nagengast.
Gracias. Mi nombre es Paul Nagengast. Noté una transmisión de la Chama de Comercio sobre una sesión que está subiendo, la Comisión Coastal está poniendo en marcha. Se llama "Haciendo viviente la vivienda en la zona coastal". Y "en" este sesion de retroalimentación pretende recopilar la entrada de la comunidad sobre cómo la Comisión Coastal y los gobiernos locales pueden implementar la ley Coastal de una manera que apoye la vivienda fair. Así que aparentemente la Comisión Coastal ha estado proporcionando, de hecho, esta noche es la sesión española y la sesión inglesa será el jueves a las 6 de la tarde. Tienen que preregistrar y será un link Zoom, pero han estado proporcionando algo que está llegando y pensé que un interés tal como el del consejo municipal, de la comisión de planificación, pero también de la comunidad, así que no, ya sabes, hablamos de control local y sorprendentemente por lo que Sacramento puede o no hacer o recibir emails del estado. Creo que es bueno que nos mantengamos en contacto con la Coastal y especialmente, ha habido mucha conversación sobre la vivienda en la zona coastal.
Gracias, Paul. Pasamos a Tony Serrano.
Buenas noches a todos. Miembros del Consejo de Cuidado de la Cisdeportiva de Hafun, mayor Jimenez, personal de la ciudad. Este año marca el 10 aniversario de la trágica pérdida de mi hermana Yanira. Su vida fue cortada durante una crisis de salud mental involucrada en la policía, un evento que impactó a nuestra familia y a toda la comunidad. Como recordamos a Yanira, es importante reconocer el progreso que nuestra ciudad ha hecho en prevenir tragedias similares. Quiero expresar mi sincero aprecio al consejo municipal por sus esfuerzos dedicados a mejorar la salud mental en nuestra comunidad. Su compromiso para establecer el equipo de cuidados, una unidad de primer responder especializada para casos de salud mental, demuestra su compasión y comprensión. Esta iniciativa no es solo una cambiación de política, es una medida salvaguasa que honra la memoria de Yanira asegurando que otros reciben la ayuda que necesitan durante sus momentos más vulnerables. Un agradecimiento especial al gerente de la ciudad, Matthew Cheater, por su trabajo terribles en hacer de Hafun Bay un lugar mejor. Su apoyo inminente y dedicación a nuestra comunidad, especialmente durante los tiempos desafiantes, han sido invalubles. Su liderazgo ha creado una fundación sólida para la confianza y el progreso. También estamos agradecidos por la cooperación con la ciudad de Hafun Bay en proporcionar la primera formación de salud mental en español en el condado de Samateo. Este milestone es un testamento a nuestro compromiso con la inclusividad y asegurando que todos los miembros de nuestra comunidad tienen acceso a los recursos esenciales. Cuando miramos atrás a estos diez años, reconocemos los cambios positivos dentro de nuestra comunidad latina. Es reforzante ver que más miembros de la comunidad se sientan bienvenidos y empoderados para expresar sus opiniones durante las reuniones de cuestión del consejo municipal. Esta inclusividad y abertura son pasos importantes hacia la construcción de una comunidad más unida y resistente. Además, la liderazgo de Joaquín Jimenez, el primer mayor latino de Hafun Bay, ha sido una fuente inmensa de apoyo e inspiración. Su dedicación a nuestra comunidad ha jugado un papel crucial en la fortalecimiento de un sentido de pertenencia y representación. Gracias una vez más por su compromiso, compasión y dedicación a hacer de Hafun Bay un lugar donde cada individuo sienta valor y ser oído. Gracias.
Gracias, carnal. Gracias, Tony. Tenemos a Crystal and Geet.
Gracias, Crystal and Geet de la Chama del costado. Solo tengo algunos updates de eventos divertidos para agregar a nuestras anteriores actualizaciones del señor presidente. I just have some fun event updates to add on to our dear mayor's updates earlier. Just wanted to note that in the OCC, if you check out the website, coastside365.com, under the Business Development tab, you'll see that Renaissance is doing lots of good workshops in both English and Spanish. And I'd like to emphasize, they are not English classes translated in Spanish. They are fully in Spanish, which is very exciting. So they are currently doing their 10-week series, which helps entrepreneurs, people who are just thinking about starting a business, on creating a business plan, finding their customers, thinking marketing strategy, all of the behind-the-scenes stuff that business people go through. So they've done that twice in English and once in Spanish. This week, we are doing the second in a series of website development classes. So if you own a business or thinking about starting a business and you want to get your website under development and you want to do it yourself, we've got resources for that as well. And there's just much more coming. The classroom is in use almost every other day of the week. And this week, we started having CSM there to start their programming while they wait for their building to be completed. And we just keep building those partnerships, and everybody is welcome. We're open nine to five.
Thank you, Crystal.
So Rocío is going to provide her comment, and then what I'm going to do is wait till she finishes, and I'll provide a site translation, and I'll interpret everything when she's done.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Rocío Ávila, y vengo aquí hoy a expresar la tristeza que me ha dado de saber que siguen buscando la forma de parar el proyecto de vivienda de 55 Kelly para trabajadores del campo. Personas que han trabajado por más de 40 años en los campos de Half Moon Bay y áreas no incorporadas del condado. Han trabajado de sol a sol dando su vida y no tienen compasión de las personas que hacemos crecer esta ciudad. Este condado realizando el trabajo más duro, más pesado. Ahora que se ha aprobado este proyecto, estén buscando firmas para que no pase. Qué desilusión tan grande y qué pena me da con las personas que están en contra y firmando lo. Están buscando la forma de cómo atraer a más turistas a que vengan a la ciudad a gastar su dinero en las tiendas, en los hoteles y restaurantes. Qué pasaría si las personas que trabajamos en estos lugares no trabajáramos más para ustedes? Por la razón que tenemos que movernos a otro lugar por la falta de vivienda. ¿Cómo crecería la economía de la ciudad y del condado sin estas personas, trabajadores agrícolas y trabajadores esenciales? Estamos pidiendo vivienda adsequible porque las necesitamos, porque tenemos la necesidad de darles un hogar digno a nuestras familias. ¿Cómo poder decirle ahora a las personas de la tercera edad que hay oposición para el proyecto de 55 Kelly aunque ya haya sido aprobado? Díganme dónde quedarán sus ilusiones de estas personas que han tenido un poco de esperanza al escuchar de esta construcción. Ahora piensen si ustedes estuvieran en la misma necesidad de una vivienda, firmarían en contra? Piénselo bien, por favor.
Good afternoon to all of you. My name is Rocío Ávila, and I am coming here to express my sadness that I have in knowing that they are still trying to find a way to stop the project at 555 Kelly for the farm workers. These are people that have worked for more than 40 years in the fields in Half Moon Bay and also non-incorporated areas. They've worked from sunup to sundown, giving their entire life, and there is no compassion. These people that are making it out to be a different way in this city, in this county. And these are the people that are doing the heavy lifting, the hardest work. Now that this project has been approved, they are looking for signatures so that this doesn't pass. What a disappointment. What a huge disappointment that I have with these people that are against and trying to find these signatures. They're trying to find a way how to attract more tourism in the city and to have them spend their money in all the stores and the hotels and the restaurants. What would happen if the people that we, all of the people here that work in these places wouldn't work here anymore because they would have to move out to a different place because they don't have housing? How would the economy grow in the city or even in the county without these people? Farm workers and essential workers alike. We're asking for affordable housing because we need them, because there is a need and give these families a dignified place to live. How can we tell these people now, people, elderly people, that there's opposition for the 555 Kelly? And that it may not even be approved? Where would all of their dreams lie if that was to take place to all of these people that are still trying to hear what's coming next with all of this construction? Now, I want you all to think, if you guys were in the same shoes, would you even consider signing something like this? I want you to all, please, think it through carefully. Thank you.
Muchas gracias, Rocío. Move on to the consent calendar. May I please have a motion to approve that consent calendar? If any of the council members would like to pull one of the items, please let me know.
Yeah, I'd like to pull the Abundant Grace item, just to give a little information for staff. Yeah, I'd like to pull the Abundant Grace item. I mean, it's a wonderful program, and I think there's some metrics around it that'd be interesting for us to hear and the public to hear. So I'd like to just pull that one item. I forget what...
One G.
One G. Okay.
I move that we approve the consent calendar items. 1A, waiving the reading of resolutions and ordinances. 1B, approval of minutes. 1C, receipt of legislative position letter. 1D, State and Federal Advocacy Services Agreement with Towns and Public Affairs Incorporated. 1E, Amendment Number 2 to the Professional Services Agreement with Bay Area Geotechnical Group for Additional Material Testing and Special Inspection Services for the John L. Carter Park Improvements Project, CIP number 0611. Item 1F, Cassell Incorporated Professional Services Agreement.
I'm seconding the motion.
I have a Roco, please.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Burbach?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Do we have a, can we get a quick presentation on the item 1G?
Be happy to, Mr. Mayor. Julissa Costa, our Community Services Analyst, is our staff representative working with Abundant Grace. She's on a well-deserved vacation. She works about 100 hours a week, so we're very happy she's enjoying some time off. So I'll jump in on this. Yeah, Councilmember Reddick reached out and asked for some additional information just about the work that they do and alternatives, which I think is an important part of any discussion. So just, we didn't go back for the whole life of the program, but we looked at the last three years, and I think some important metrics related to this program, and I'll share, just for the public who may not have read the staff report. The city since, I believe, 2018 has contracted with Abundant Grace, a local service provider that mostly works with unhoused residents, on an innovative program that we call the Coastside Clean Team. And under the contract, they hire and pay coastside residents, most of whom are unhoused, on certain days of the week to go down and clean our beaches and some of our heavily-used streets and trails where tourists especially frequent. And it has two main benefits. The first, of course, is it helps to support staff and the work that we do, especially when there's larger amounts of work that need to be taken care of. Kind of, it smoothes things out for us. But it also serves as a really great social services program in that it provides good quality employment on the terms that work for this population. It also means that people that are looking for positive ways to spend their time during the day, because typically they're not gainfully employed, to be working on great things that help them build their own skills, but also benefit the community and build pride in the community. And ultimately, the goal is for them to be able to build job skills and experience that allow them to transition to other types of employment that are not necessarily subsidized or paid for by the government. And so just some statistics along the lines of those areas. Over the last three years, there's been an average of 90 unduplicated individuals per year participating in the program throughout the year. 50,000 pounds of trash picked up annually over the last three years. Of the participants, the 90 per year that have participated, 46 individuals have found permanent housing. And there's not a direct connection to being on the clean team and getting permanent housing, but again, when people are engaged in positive activities during the day, it builds confidence, it builds character, and it builds the opportunity to look for other ways to improve their lives. And I think there is a connection from those outcomes to receiving and being able to obtain housing. Additionally, of the 90 average per year that work in this program, 28 of those individuals have graduated from doing this work to permanent unsubsidized employment in our community, which I think is a really incredible outcome, because again, if you have challenges that you're facing, and the only kind of work you can do is initially something as simple, it's not easy work, but again, it's work that's been designed and scheduled in a way that can accommodate overcoming challenges and reach the point where you can now work full-time or at least part-time in a traditional job, that is a huge outcome, and I think it really is a testament to the leadership building and the skill building that goes on at Abundant Grace. They truly are a job support program, an employee development program, as well as serving our local homeless community. One of the questions that came up is could the city go ahead and provide these services ourselves? And we could. We took a look at this. Our Public Works Director, whose team handles the maintenance, looked at this, and his estimation is that it would take an additional full-time staff member to accomplish the same results over a year-long period at a cost of about double what this contract is for this fiscal year. And in addition, probably on busy weekends, some additional support from other staff. So it is something we could bring in-house, and unfortunately, wouldn't save money and wouldn't derive some of the social benefits, and that's why staff is recommended continuing with the program. I'll point out, it's in the staff report, but there is a reduction in the scope, frequency of the program this year and the associated costs. That's a combination of some changing needs at Abundant Grace, and of course, our current budget situation and looking for ways to save money. We still think we'll have great outcomes, and many people will still continue to work in this program if you choose to approve the contract while also supporting the staff's mission to reduce costs where we can. So I'm happy to answer any other questions, but wanted to share those facts.
So I just wanted to pull this item because it's a wonderful program. It's one of the most heavily-supported programs among the public. You know, it's really built high esteem for the homeless that participate and for Abundant Grace, and they do solid, good work. And I think for something like this, it seemed like a good idea to share that data, you know, with the public, because it is a great program. And thank you for taking the time to dig in today, and really appreciate the work that staff and Abundant Grace is doing, as well as our unhoused fellow citizens. So thank you.
I'm also a great fan of this program. I would love to invite Eric DeBode, the head of Abundant Grace, to come and give a maybe half-an-hour presentation, show a video of some of the folks that work in the program, and share some of the success stories. It's amazing. It's wonderful, and it's... I go back to before the program had started, and I remember hearing so many complaints from people about the homeless people on the street who are sitting around and drinking beer and smoking cigarettes and creating trash and acting out. You don't hear that complaint anymore. People don't have to complain because the homeless in Half Moon Bay are being taken care of. And not all of them, not everybody is willing to participate in this program, but the great majority of the homeless are. And the statistics just go to show what a great program it is. So I'd love to have him come and give us a...
Thank you. And typically, historically, we've had him join us. Eric is on a well-deserved sabbatical right now, so when he returns refreshed and rejuvenated, we'll definitely invite him to come, and I'm sure some of the participants might enjoy coming and talking to council as well. So we'll set that up for later this year. Thank you.
I think this program is the definition of a win-win. It's a win for the people involved, it's a win for the city. It's something that the council is, I'm sure, as you've heard, 100% behind, so I think it's a wonderful idea.
I'd like to move approval of item 1G.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
I want to make a comment too. Thank you. I'm definitely a supporter of this program. You know, we have seen the change around the creek area, the work that Eric and Abundant Grace have done in our community. We see them at the beach, on the Pearl Trail, doing the cleanup. And yeah, it's changed. It's changed our community. That's why we continue to support Abundant Grace. It's like, you know, like Tony mentioned, you know, Matthew also commenting, it's a testament to what Half Moon Bay is, right? We're actually changing the lives of people, you know, and we continue to do that. I mean, not everybody agrees, you know, how empathic we are with our community, but we know what's needed, and that's why we do what we do. And we're going to continue to support Abundant Grace and Eric and his team to continue, for them to do excellent work to keep our streets, the beach clean. So no, thank you, Eric and Abundant Grace, and please, you know, extend invitation. And please, you know, extend invitation when he comes back from his well-deserved vacation, stand for vacation. So we can, we'd love to have him here and maybe do a video about the work that they do, introduce our staff and some of the participants of the program. We'd love to see that. Thank you. And we have a motion to approve the item.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rabeck?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We move on to ordinance and public hearings, item two A.
Good evening, Mayor Jimenez, council and community. Irma Costa, administrative analyst with the Economic and Community Vitality Division. I am here tonight to follow up on our meetings from May 21st and June 18th. During the May 21st meeting, council approved the Half Moon Bay Business Improvement Annual Report for 2023. You also adopted a resolution affirming the city's intention to continue the BID and increase the levy assessment to a rate of $2 per room per night. This assessment funds promotion and marketing efforts for lodging establishments in the city and the coast side. In accordance to state code governing BIDs, a public meeting is a statutory requirement to increase this assessment. So tonight, Mayor Jimenez will open the public hearing, and we will entertain any verbal or written protest following closing the public hearing. Then, if the council is inclined, we will proceed to adopt a resolution increasing the levy assessment for the Half Moon Bay Hotel Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2024, 2025. So at this time, I invite Mayor Jimenez to open the public hearing.
Do we have anybody who'd like to comment on the item two A protest comment? Hearing is closed.
Do we have any written protest?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Irma. Do we need a...
So this would be your opportunity to have any discussion or ask staff any questions about this item before, we would need a motion and a roll call.
You have questions, comments?
I was just ready to make a motion if there was no comments or questions.
Make a motion, please.
I move that we adopt a resolution assessing the levy for the Half Moon Bay Hotel Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2024, 25. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rabeck?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Move on to item two B.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the public. My name is Maz Bezogunia, Public Works Director and City Engineer. I'm here with Kenneth Stiles, our Finance Manager. And we are going to be presenting sewer assessments for the fiscal year 2024, 25. So tonight, the request of council is to conduct a public hearing, similar to the previous item. After the public hearing, the recommendation would be to adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 24, 25 sewer service assessments and charges, ultimately directing staff to file the assessment with the county controller, to place them on the tax rule, and as well as directing staff to bill assessments to those members that are not directly on the tax rule. A little bit of background, the city owns and operates its own sewer collection system with treatment at the Sewer Authority Midcoast Side, completed through a joint powers authority with two other member agencies to the north of us. The city charges the users of our sewer collection systems for those services and places those funds into the Sewer Enterprise Fund. And as part of that enterprise fund, those costs, those dollars are utilized to maintain our system, to operate the collection system, to fund cleaning of our sewer systems, as well as providing our payment to the proportional share of the Sewer Authority Midcoast Side treatment costs. This item tonight is the last of the, last year of the increase of sewer service charges that was adopted as part of the sewer study that was complete on June 2nd of 2020. And these charges would apply to a total of 3,464 customers.
So I'm just going to walk council through the logistics of the sewer assessment. For administrative fees, we utilize the property tax rule to collect sewer charges from most folks. This is about 3,000 parcels in our jurisdiction that we will be asking the county to assess for us. What that means is it comes on a property tax bill where the payment is due in December and April. And the accounting deadline that we have to deliver the information to them is July 31st to hit this year's tax rules. There are some oddball parcels that don't receive a property tax bill. For those, we directly bill them. That is about 170 customers that we're asking council for permission to bill them directly. And because this is a fee assessment, we, of course, are required to conduct a public hearing. If the assessment charge was approved, this would generate about $7 million for the sewer fund. Now, as mentioned previously, the rates themselves were determined back in 2020 in a rate study and in a 2018 process. Council approved those rates for five years, and this is the last year of that study. So the rate that was approved back then is approximately 13% for all customers for this fiscal year. So at this time, we'd invite Mayor Jimenez to open a public hearing, and for any comments closed. And if there were any discussion by council, if council were to move forward with the recommendation, the recommendation would be as follows. Adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 24, 25 sewer service assessments and charges. Direct staff to file the assessment rule and authorize the county controller to place the assessment charges on the county San Mateo property tax rule. And finally, direct staff to bill assessments directly that are not on the tax rule.
I now open a public hearing. Any comments? Yes. Can you please just step aside a point, please? Thank you.
They said this is the last year, and that it was increased by 13%. Does that mean next year it's going to fall off, or it's going to continue?
Happy to answer that. That would establish the rate moving forward. So there's no other additional increases, but the rate would be set at that amount as part of this last rate study. Any future increases or decreases would be subject to another rate study.
And that $7 million came from the 3,100 homes or 37 homes?
Correct. The total of all the customers that are serviced by it. Correct.
Thank you. We have any more comments, questions from council? Reading comments? We do.
Hazel, join us.
Yes, I'm just wondering, I just recently realized that on my street, on Valdez Avenue, the sewer district was here trying to, I think they were trying to fix a sewer issue at the, I guess it's the bottom of our street because it's downstream. And they mentioned that there was sewer backup, and that a lot of the sewer backup from the storms affected many of our residents' properties down there. And so a lot of the backup of sewer inundated their properties. So I was wondering if the city can actually look into this as well? And I understand on Garcia, there were properties there that there was an additional backup of sewage there because of some issues regarding either backflow or inundation of stormwater and sewage out there. And there were two vehicles there that were also damaged, and the residents had to go to their insurance company. So I was just wondering if the city can actually look into that to see the issues associated with that, and to see how, you know, this agenda item can effectively solve those issues? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have a, yes, please, can you comment to the comment, please?
Absolutely. Happy to respond. Thank you to Hazel for the comment. So there's a lot to that. I am aware of a number of stormwater-related impacts from the storms of 22, 23, especially in some of those neighborhoods with respect to flooding. During that time, we did have some sanitary sewer overflows, but the majority of the damage was stormwater-related and not commingled with the sanitary sewer system itself, if that's where we're talking about. We do take our overflow seriously, and those are documented through the state's website. And we do always follow up and make sure that, you know, in any areas that are of concern, any of these blockages that we address through routine maintenance, through capital projects, that this assessment allows us to undertake. So what happened recently was actually, we have been continuing to look at our sewer system, and we look at opportunities to correct issues and make the system more efficient. And so what was witnessed more recently was a bypass pipe established to prevent future SSOs in certain areas. And so what we did was, we essentially, there's two mains that run parallel to each other, and we took an opportunity to connect to the larger system for those types of larger sewage events. So when there is more sanitary sewer running through the smaller pipe, there's basically a safety release that'll take it to the larger pipe. So yes, these funds help us to maintain our system, to incorporate improvements, such as these types of bypass systems, as well as other types of improvements like the pump station rehabilitation and many other areas. So, and we continue to look at those areas of concern. And if there's any, I'm not aware of any major sewer-related backups that have caused property damage. There have been a few here and there, and those are, you know, we always ask for residents to reach out to the city with respect to those issues, and we will review and assess and support them through that process.
Thank you, Maz. Do we have any other speakers? Comments?
I'd just like to say that the Sewer Authority Midcoast does a really excellent job of responding to customer complaints, for one thing. The majority of times when customers call to say that there's a problem with their sewer backing up, with their backup from their sewer, it's not something that's responsibility of the city or the county. It's something to do with their own personal lines. That's what happens most of the time. But they respond to every call, and they respond promptly. So it's a hard-working group of people. If you see them out there on the street, please thank them. They do an excellent job. And I'm on the board, as is Councilmember Riddick. So we're aware of what goes on at the Sewer Authority, and we're happy with the service that they're giving us.
Thank you. Do we have more comments? We're ready to close the hearing. We have a motion, please?
I move, oh, we had the motion up there. That's right. I move that we adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 2024 sewer service assessments and charges. Direct staff to file the assessment rule and authorize the county controller to place the assessment charges on the County of San Mateo property tax rule, and direct staff to bill assessments directly that are not on the tax rule. Second.
How about a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rabeck?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Move on to item two C.
Mr. Mayor, while staff is getting set up for this item, I wanted to share a couple of items of clarification before they make the presentation. The first item I wanted to talk about is the direction that we got from council and where we are today. This item came up several times leading up to our priority setting this year. And on March 19th of this year, staff brought a general analysis of what could be done around Measure D, including a menu of different choices that could be explored. And the two items that you chose for us to explore included an administrative approach to modifying Measure D and a ballot measure approach. Due to the limited time we had leading up to the ballot and other staff challenges with bandwidth, we focused on the ballot measure portion of it, understanding that if we didn't want to pursue that, or if it failed at the ballot, then the city could pursue the administrative approach as well. I don't think that was communicated well enough to you, and that's on me. So I apologize for that. So there has not, we can speak to the administrative approach and whether or not what we understand could be applied. But as far as it being an option in lieu of this, that analysis hasn't been fully completed. So that piece was not perfectly done. The other item that I wanted to share related to this is the option you did choose was for staff to present an analysis and a draft ballot measure that would amend Measure D to amend the map, to remove ADUs, affordable housing, and mobile homes from requiring a Measure D certificate. The ballot measure that has been brought through our planning commission and is before you tonight does not include mobile homes. That's inadvertent. It's a mistake at the staff level, and I apologize for that. If the result of this meeting is you want to pursue the ballot measure, and you want to pursue mobile homes as was originally directed, we would need to go back to the planning commission and then bring it back to you for certification. It is possible, but it would be an extremely hard turnaround. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, that piece. The last thing I want to share is feedback we got. I want to make sure we're 100% clear to you, but also to the community. In the staff report that's before you and that was presented, there are two options. One is the original ballot measure as was drafted. The second came from the feedback we received and the recommendation we received from the planning commission, which was to not pursue all the changes, but to, and I want to be specific, consider the map only. And just the clarification... And just the clarification there is, the recommendation from the planning commission was not to change the map or to put that on the ballot, it was for you to consider it. So it's nuanced, but we just want to make sure you're clear that the recommendation from the planning commission wasn't that they want you to change the map, it's that they recommend you consider that and that'll be part of the presentation and the discussion tonight. So I hope those clarifications are helpful as our staff team makes a presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns about the things that I've shared with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Good evening, Mayor Jimenez and City Council. My name's Okoye Wilson, I'm the Assistant Planner with the City of Half Moon Bay. Tonight, we will, like Matthew led up to, be presenting you two options relating to ballot, potential ballot measures. A bit of background on this item, this was first identified at the priority setting meeting back in March, where it was made a priority to look at a ballot measure for amending Measure D. Then on March 19th, staff brought some potential options to council, where staff got feedback to prepare a ballot measure to add exemptions and modify the downtown area boundary, as well as the potential administrative option, which Matthew already touched on. Then on June 11th, staff brought a potential proposed ballot measure to the planning commission for review. The planning commission continued that item to a following meeting on June 25th, requesting additional analysis of the potential impacts in that meeting, most specifically relating to the impacts of exempting ADUs and affordable units. Following that, staff brought additional information to them on June 25th and ultimately they recommended the city council not place the proposed ballot measure, but rather to consider placing a measure, amending the map. Some background on Measure D, I'm sure you may have heard some of this before, but it may help the community as well. Measure D is the city's growth management system. It was first adopted by voters in 1999 and then became effective in 2009 because it required certification by the Coastal Commission. But the fact that it was initially a voter-approved measure is part of the reason it has to, again, go back to the voters for any sort of changes relating to it. Currently, it accommodates up to 1.5% of population growth annually. That is split between the downtown and the outside of downtown. At the base level, it's split between 0.5% downtown and 0.5% outside of downtown, but at city council's discretion, council may permit an additional 0.5% in the downtown area. And historically, since Measure D has been in effect, that additional 0.5% has been permitted. Currently, the downtown area is defined by the Half Moon Bay Redevelopment Survey, which was adopted in 1998, and current exemptions under the measure include replacement of existing units and density bonus units through California state law. Option one that we'll be looking at is the measure that staff initially presented to the planning commission on June 11th and June 25th. This option includes amendments that would exempt ADUs and affordable, deed-restricted affordable units, as well as amend the downtown map to the town center map within the local coastal land use plan. So this was prepared based off of that feedback from the March 19th meeting, based on some of those options. As you can see here at the bottom, this is how this measure would be presented to the voters in the form of a question. If you want to take a second to look at that before I move on to the slides, this is also in the staff report as well. Option two is based on the recommendation provided by the planning commission, so this option would only amend the downtown area map, it would not include any of the exemptions within option one. And again, you can see the question as it would be viewed on the ballot. Here you can see, on the left, you have the redevelopment survey area, which defines the existing boundaries of the downtown area of Measure D. Within red, these are areas that would be included in the downtown designation if the town, it would be amended as the town center map, which can be seen on the right. Areas in blue indicate areas that would be removed from the downtown designation. So these areas would then fall within the outside of downtown designation. So the areas within the town center map, and then again, the areas in the redevelopment survey and then in red would include, would have an additional potential for 0.5% annually for Measure D. So that's the main difference between those areas. The, both options, as mentioned, would include this map amendment. And the reasoning behind the town center map is this was initially developed by the planning commission and approved by the city council back in 2017 and then was officially certified within the local coastal land use plan. So this is already a map that has been established and in previous years was even used when considering potential transfers of Measure D. This area is more of what the community perceives as a downtown than what is shown on the redevelopment survey. And again, there's policies within the local coastal land use plan that identifies the town center area to be an area where future development is concentrated, as well as infill. And expanding the downtown area to be the town center map would include more applicable infill properties. Currently, if the changes were to be proposed, approximately 43 properties would no longer be included within the downtown area. Those properties were notified prior to this meeting. An additional 323 properties would be included in the downtown area, but this does include Amesport Landing and all of the condos within then. And that's about 119 individually-owned units. So excluding Amesport Landing, it would consider about 204 additional properties within the downtown area. And most of these properties are going to be within the South Downtown and the Heritage Downtown neighborhoods. This is just really to show you some of the changes that would be included and the differences between the ordinances, but not something we're going to get too far into. As you can see here, this amendment to the zoning ordinance would be applicable to both options one and two, whereas in another section, there would be amendments that would only be applicable to option one. And this would be adding those exemptions into the zoning ordinance. Same thing applies for the land use plan. Policy 2-16 would then include exemptions under option one. And then within option one and two, policy 2-16 would include designating the downtown area as the town center. Next steps would be, council may adopt a resolution to place a measure on the ballot. The measure would then be placed on the November 5th, 2024 general election ballot. And then if approved by voters, it would still need to be certified by the Coastal Commission. And that is the same for both options. Tonight, staff is recommending you adopt a resolution placing a ballot measure of one of the two options. Additionally, we're recommending to determine if city council wishes to submit an argument in favor of whichever chosen measure and if so, who would be writing the argument in favor of the proposed measure. And that's all I have.
Thank you. So now we open the hearing for any comments? Reading comments? Please?
I'd like to ask, how does this resolution connect with the housing element document and that proposed work?
I'd be happy to answer that. Well, between the two different options, there would be different impacts in regards to the housing element and how those relate. Within option one, exempting the ADUs and the deed-restricted affordable units would likely help us meet the RENA numbers identified in the draft housing element. Off the top of my head, I believe it's around 285, somewhere in there, of needed affordable housing units. And both ADUs, a portion of that would be applicable, as well as all deed-restricted affordable housing units. Within the map, there would be less direct impacts, but it does open up the opportunity for more infill sites to potentially be used for affordable units, ADUs, things like that.
I'm sorry, if I may, one more question. Is the primary reason for this ballot measure to address the needs as presented in the housing element document, or is it to encourage individual residents to develop ADUs and more other housing options?
So it would be to both provide consistency with the local coastal land use plan, as well as address some of the needs of the housing element.
May I ask one last thing? Is it possible in a future version of this presentation to overlay or to make that connection with the housing element document, just so we can see that connection more clearly?
Yeah, that's provided in the previous planning commission staff reports. Staff would be happy to show you where that could be found within the agenda packet or online. And there is actually some analysis as it relates to the housing element within the, most specifically, the June 11th Planning Commission staff report.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any more comments or reading comments? Hearing is closed. We have any comments from council members, questions?
The planning commission is our local land use experts. The members have all been appointed by us. We trust them or we would not have appointed them. The planning commission unanimously approved the coastal development permit for 555 Kelly, which was subsequently accepted by the council. The planning commission, with a majority vote, recommended that we not include the Measure D amendments that had been previously discussed and which I had been on the record as being against, and I'm still against. So I agree definitely not to approve option one. Option two is a little bit more tricky. I agree that the existing downtown area is not adequately described by the 1998 redevelopment map, but in retrospect, if, not in retrospect, but if we're going to put that on the ballot, it's going to cost 10 grand. I don't think it's going to make a major difference. It's going to be confusing to the residents. We're also going to be considering another ballot measure. So my opinion is that we not put even the map amendment on the ballot, but definitely not put the change in the land use requirements on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Yeah, I would actually like to hear why we would want to put it on the ballot. It, the ballot this coming November is going to be crazy. I don't know that the votes are going to reflect really what the public wants because so many people are going to be looking at this long ballot and just not reading this item, not voting on it, because they don't see it or because it's too confusing. I don't know why we don't just adopt what we've adopted, why, you know, hold on to what we've decided is downtown in our local coastal plan. So I don't see putting either option on the ballot.
Can I ask for clarification through the mayor?
Yes, please.
I'm not sure if I heard it correctly, but it sounded like there was a question there why we didn't, why we don't just fix the map administratively? Is that what I'm hearing? I'm happy to answer that unless Catherine would prefer, it's a legal question, so.
Sure. So the current Measure D map was attached to Measure D and the voters reviewed it when they approved Measure D. And so therefore, it is voter-approved, it can only be changed by the voters.
But that has to do with Measure D?
Correct.
Right. So we can't look at the map separate from Measure D and just say, this is a downtown map that makes much more sense? Let's adopt this as our downtown map?
I think we can do that and we have done that in our land use plan.
Yeah.
But we cannot make it affect Measure D and the issuance of Measure D certificates unless we go to the voters. So there's currently a downtown map, but it is not relevant to Measure D currently, unless we go to the voters.
Ah, got it.
Yeah.
Thank you. So if you could just give, you referred to the fact that the proposed map is already in use. It's part of the LCP. It's not like it's something new that we're springing on people. We've been using this map, it's...
Correct, yeah. This map is already part of the local coastal land use plan, there is policy surrounding the town center. But as it relates to Measure D, you can see in, here's the policy from the local coastal land use plan, currently it specifically identifies the downtown as the redevelopment survey area. So in order to make it that town center map, that is already within that land use plan, that would require that voter approval.
Yeah, so I didn't quite understand that previously. I was kind of questioning whether we should put the map on, but since we've been using it, it seems to make sense to me. Although, looking at it more deeply, I was confused about why we would not include the entire, say, Podesta property in the downtown area. The radius in the map includes some of Podesta, but not all of it. And it is a PUD, it has to be developed, you know, as one piece. It looked to me like only part of Podesta would qualify as being in the town center and I'm not quite sure why that, why we would do that.
Give us one moment, I don't think that's staff's understanding, but if we can just have a moment to clarify that.
So you're referring to Podesta as seen on the town center map in the top right corner, correct?
Yeah.
Would you be able to, I apologize, I'm not super familiar with the area. To me, it does look like it has the whole area, so I don't know if it's just an issue with how the boundaries are shown or if I'm...
Maybe I was just confused.
I'll confirm, I'm looking at our GIS system. The entirety of Podesta, as well as the frontage portion of that property on Lewis Foster Drive is included already. So the new map doesn't change that, that was already part of the previous map as well.
I think the confusion is the circle that's drawn over the town center map. And what does that circle mean?
Yeah. My apologies, this image does not include the legend that's associated with the town center map. Here, the circle, you don't need to be concerned with it as it relates to the properties that are included. What you want to focus on are the three colors seen here. So you have a yellow highlight, a red and a blue, and then you kind of have a blue boundary and then a black boundary on Podesta. That's the specific area that would be included. So the circle, it's, again, apologies, I don't have the legend in front of me, but I believe it's just identifying a half-mile radius around the center of downtown.
Yeah, well, I would think that you would not want to put that map on the ballot.
I was going to ask, if the council wanted to move forward with putting this map on the ballot, does it have to be the map as it's placed? the ballot, does it have to be the map as it's placed in the LUP, or could we simplify it? Because if it's confusing to the council, it's going to be confusing to voters.
We could simplify it.
Yeah, I think you need to do that if you're going to put it in the ballot. So, I don't know about my fellow council members. I would be okay with the map being on the ballot, given that it's already in use, and that seems to make sense to me. After looking at the data generated for the Planning Commission and things, you know, it doesn't look to me that exempting ADUs would not necessarily have a very big impact, because we've granted Measure Ds, and then they're not used. And I just don't, I'm not sure I see the point anymore. And I was looking back at our discussion originally, and we were actually going to pursue the administrative process kind of first, get that going before, like, going to the ballot, and then we kind of changed horses in midstream. You know, it makes sense to me to reduce the size of the Measure D allocation required for ADUs. We do it to set sewer fees. It makes sense to me to only require half of a Measure D for an ADU. I would definitely, you know, support that. I don't know if we need to go to the ballot for that. I'd rather have that on the ballot than just exempting them outright. I'm having a cramp. Sorry, folks. Let me stand up. So, I'm kind of against just exempting ADUs at this point, but I would entertain a process by which we, you know, reduce it to half. And I think that would free up a lot of space and probably meet the unmet demand, you know, without having to put something on the ballot. As far as affordable housing, density bonuses are already exempt, and I think that we need to be careful with exempting, just blanket exempting, affordable housing, because 100% affordable, you know, has property tax implications, and I think you want to look at that, you know, more closely. So, I'm just not, I'm not interested in looking at a blanket exemption for affordable housing at this time, given that so much of them, if you're 100% affordable, is exempted, you know, in any case. And there's always the potential to phase, especially as projects are trying to amass the funding they need over multiple years. So, not so concerned with that. So, I would rather pursue the administrative angle at this point, and I think that would probably be more amenable to the Coastal Commission, given that it took 10 years to certify Measure D originally, passed in 1999, and then certified in 2009. I think we can, you know, probably get some administrative relief done quicker, and I think that would, that would meet the need. So, that's where I'm coming down right now. Okay with the map, thinking that we, that, I'm not sold on the exempting ADUs in a blanket fashion, so.
Councilmember Brunson, comments?
Yeah, I like the idea of pursuing the administrative process, putting, if you want to put the map on, but we don't need to do that, right? If we just go through this, are you saying that's part of the administrative?
Well, frankly, I think, I agree with staff that the map, a cleaned-up map, a clear map ought to be on the ballot.
Since we're already de facto using that map, right?
Right, you know, we need a good map to administer the allocation process.
Right.
And we're already using the map. I didn't have the impression that this was something that was widely used by planning at this point, but now that I understand that, I'm okay with, and I think we probably should. I think it makes sense to put the map on, but it needs to be, you know, clear. The other thing we can do administratively, and we talked about this back in March, is take another look at the allocation system, you know, how we weight projects, you know, over each other. I think we can probably do a much better job streamlining that by looking at the beauty contest, you know, piece of it, or just the allocation system generally, because that's separate from Measure D. That's the administrative implementation. So, I would like to take another look at the allocation system as well.
Yeah, no, I'm comfortable going down that path. There's also, you know, I like to defer to the Measure D experts on our council here who've been at this for a long time and understand the nuances. So, I appreciate what councilmember Ruddock is saying. Also, just a quick comment, you know, don't, just want to make sure, you know, the public doesn't assume that when we say there's an affordable ADU, you know, that's never really quite clear. I mean, someone builds an ADU, they might be shooting for that market rate. You know, there's all different kinds of reasons why people build ADUs, so maybe they want to afford, they're retired, they want to continue to afford their mortgages on their main house. There's lots of different reasons, and it's a bit complex. So, I would never, just think we have to caution people not to assume. And getting something deed-restricted to stay, low income, I don't know how many folks want to build ADUs under that condition either, so. Yeah, no, I feel better about, one, we should have a clear map that reinforces what's already in practice. Otherwise, it gets us in trouble. You know, what are we doing here, and people start trying to...
It's a cleanup ballot measure, essentially, right? You're making it confusing with existing uses. That's something the public can understand, I think.
And then in the meantime, over the next year or so, if you want to research other possibilities, great, but I think for now, that's about as far as we should go.
Yeah, and that, you know, again, we talked about this in March, but the issue of favoring, you know, deed-restricted or affordable ADUs, the problem there is that many people have to finance those. And, you know, right now, you're spending $100,000 or $200,000, you know, to build an ADU, and you have to finance that, and with mortgage rates high, it just seems like that's a stretch for people. You know, maybe through the allocation system, there's, you know, better incentives that we could, you know, offer up, but I think it's going to be carrots rather than a stick, given the way, you know, costs are, you know, and people's obligations.
Are we talking about units that are deed-restricted for low-income households that are non-ADUs? I thought that was part of the discussion.
That's correct. The ballot measure, option one, that's before you, exempts all ADUs, deed-restricted or otherwise, all deed-restricted affordable housing, and we can get clarity on at what level. And then, again, the original direction from you that was left out of this was mobile homes as well. And if we go down that path and we want to talk about that, we can talk about that process after you've deliberated on these other items.
Yeah, I would like to relook at the restrictions on deed-restricted low-income households. And I like the idea of giving them exemptions, not necessarily ADUs, but households.
My understanding is that deed-restricted units, whether they're ADUs or single-family homes, either one of those gets an enormous bump up in the beauty contest to allow them to get a Measure D allocation. So, I don't think it's really relevant that we go into the trouble of saying, to make a ballot measure, that they're exempt, when the reality is that they almost always will get a Measure D. The point I had been making in March, and I want to make again, is that the vast majority of the Measure D requests have been for ADUs. If we exempt them, then what will be available for the rest of Measure D is going to be majority single-family homes. And I don't think that's the way that we ought to approach realistically making more affordable housing for Half Moon Bay. So, when people talk about how desirable ADUs are, I'm not arguing with that. What I am arguing with is that exempting them from Measure D would do just the exact opposite of what people want. It would actually not encourage affordable housing. It would encourage more market-rate housing. That's the point I wanted to make, and I still make it.
Right, I agree with you there.
And I don't want to end up with a lot of new additional, empty, single-family homes that are second or third or fourth homes. But I just, as, you know, the co-author of Measure D many years ago, the whole point of it was to grow in a manner that's consistent with our infrastructure's ability to serve it. So, by willy-nilly exempting a bunch of stuff, you know, we're not, you know, supporting the original purpose, right? We're not, we're not, our growth is not tracking, at least from a data point. We can't tell if it's tracking, you know, growth, but it likely, you know, is not. So, that was the beauty of Measure D, was that we could grow in a manner that was consistent with our ability to support it. And I don't think we should be doing willy-nilly, you know, exemptions of it, because it defeats the purpose. And, you know, Harvey, you pointed out that there seems to be Measure Ds available, and some of the affordable housing projects have their Measure Ds already, because a lot of it is going to be exempt through density bonus. So, I don't, I don't think that's, that's an issue right now. I don't think we want to defeat the original purpose of Measure D. You might as well just throw it out altogether then, and we don't want to do that, so.
I agree.
Any more comments? One of the concerns that I have, actually, on the two options, now would be for option two, is to clarify the new map that's already being used, you know, for, for race reporters to understand which are the areas that we can actually approve ADUs. The other thing is setting up a deadline, you know, because I know some of the, you know, the allocations for ADUs, they don't follow through. So, something we need to, you know, give them, you know, deadline to what date they have, you know, to request, you know, the permits, you know, to building. And if we could add that to, you know, to the, to the option two, you know, would, that would be perfect. And I understand, you know, originally, I misunderstood. I was actually not clear with Measure D. It's taken me a while to be able to understand, and I agree with you, and Harvey, I agree with you, but I do also know that we need to be clear, you know, about the map. In our last meeting, you know, that's one of the things that I, you know, that I requested, you know, to have the map available for the new, new development of our ADUs.
I think staff will want a little bit of clarification on some of the recommendations you've made. I will just share, generally, we've heard a lot tonight just about changing, or taking a harder look at and maybe revising some of the administrative policies around Measure D. That was also a topic among the Planning Commission, very much aligns with what you've talked about tonight, and I believe it's something we will pursue. And the topic that you mentioned, that there is a problem that people get issued a Measure D, and they never see it through, and that Measure D certificate is lost. What I, I guess what we're not sure we understand is you talked about adding something to the ballot measure, option two, to address that?
Yes, can we do that? Can we actually put a deadline, you know, about the allocations for Measure D, you know, for the, for ADUs, for they have to actually complete the process of building?
Or what? If they don't, if they don't complete, what happens?
But the allocation system is separate from Measure D.
Yeah, I think what you're referring to is something that can be evaluated administratively and doesn't require going to the ballot. Ocoe is our resident expert on Measure Ds, so she might be able to talk about that process, and then obviously Catherine can address whether or not it needs to go to the ballot.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question, Mayor Jimenez?
Please do.
Were you referring to you would want to see a more strict deadline on Measure Ds? Was that correct?
On the allocations, yes. So, what has been happening, you know, is data, the people apply for, you know, for ADU allocations, and they don't follow through. So, we give them a deadline, you know, where they have, where they have to follow through, even if it's not on the ballot, but it's something we could do.
So, we do currently, Measure D allocations expire within one year. There is potential to extend that if requested, but there is a deadline after one year that those expire if they have not submitted for their follow-up coastal development permit or any other permitting required. So, that is already in place, and then I believe some other options that could address that might be able to be explored administratively.
One of the things that came up at Planning Commission is to explore some sort of penalty for folks that have applied, received a Measure D certificate. And this wouldn't apply just to ADUs, it's just in general. If you apply for a Measure D certificate, you receive it, and then you don't follow through with the utilization of that for construction, maybe there could be a penalty that if you wanted to reapply later, it'd be part of prioritization in the scoring, or there'd be a time period where you couldn't apply. And I think that's all, you know, that's a discussion that we would invite public participation and feedback, and involve the Planning Commission in that discussion. But those, again, those are things that came up with Planning Commission, and I think address what the concern that you have, but it doesn't sound like it would be required to go on a ballot measure to make those things happen.
Got it, thank you. So, in, yes, to be clear, you know, having the map available on the ballot, you know, it's what I'm opting for. Thank you. Any more? Nope. Do we need a resolution from us?
You do, I do, now I want to ask the clarifying question. I always want to make sure that at a staff level, we understand council direction on simplifying the map, because if you approve this tonight, it will go forward, you know, with preparation for the ballot, and you won't see it again until it's on the ballot. And so, I just want to check in with planning staff. What I heard was to remove the half-mile radius, because that's confusing, and we may want to just put a very, a very clear dark line around the town center and make it clear that that's the new boundary. But I, I guess I want to check the planning staff, see if you need further direction on that from council, on how to simplify the map.
Well, I think just having some good description, you know, in the ballot language, explaining what this does. We draw your attention to the dark line around this area. It means X, right?
I'm sure we can remind, before we go to the ballot, you know, in October, about to look into the map, and make sure there's understanding of the map.
Maybe Jessica could chime in here. I believe we have to have all of this worked out by August 8th, for submission by August 9th.
Yes.
So, yeah, tonight was really it. But I think, my understanding, and again, I want to clarify with Catherine, we don't have to use the exact map that's in the LUP. We would use the same boundaries and create the simplest map possible that makes it absolutely clear. So, I see other things on this map that show other properties the city owns, like the Johnston House at the bottom, you know, Main Street is highlighted. I think all of that goes out, and you just have a map that really clearly defines the boundaries.
And people want to relate those boundaries to things they know, too. So, you don't want to eliminate all the identifying...
So, having identifiers that, again, make it, everything's about clarity as to what we're showing. And the boundaries would be the same as what's on this map before us, but we make it really, really explicitly clear.
Yeah, with appropriate language, ballot language summarizing what it is they're looking at.
So, right now, the ballot language is pretty simple with respect to the option regarding just changing the map, and it says, sort of a few different places, but I just want to read it so that it's clear. So, previously, it defined the downtown area as designated as the downtown Half Moon Bay redevelopment survey in city resolution, blah, blah, blah. It would strike that language and replace it, as proposed before you tonight, with the downtown area is the area designated as the town center in figure 2-2 of the Half Moon Bay Local Coastal Land Use Plan. And that language is repeated in a few different places. And then there's a reference... And then there's a reference in an attached figure, which currently is just the, you know, figure 2-2 of the local land use plan. I think the, the simplest approach would probably be to keep that figure, but to add, take out the confusing radius map and add a legend that says, you know, or dark line, you know, as shown in the dark line, this is the area proposed to be the, you know, downtown area. Not very articulate, but a very clear legend and a dark line on the map, I think would be really clear to the voters. John, I think you have something to add.
Is it on? I, I concur entirely with that, and I think the reason why you want to keep the reference to 2-2 is that you may, in fact, as a council and as a commission, ultimately modify that slightly and do modifications down the road. This keeps you from having to come back and do a voter initiative to change that map to reflect an LCP amendment, which might add a single parcel onto the map, for example. And that's why we went with this language that would reflect that. And I think what Catherine is describing is a great compromise and a middle ground to that point, which is to still keep the reference, but clarify and clean up the map to just show basically a nice boundary area with that. But there was a reason for the language, which was that it didn't require voter approval every time a minor change might be made to that map.
Thank you, John.
Okoye, could you pull up the ballot question again? And then this is the proposed ballot question, and so we would want to make sure this is what goes in the resolution that gets forwarded to the county. So if there are any modifications you'd want to make to this, now would be the time to do that as well.
So I don't see the reference to figure 2-2 in the...
As in the actual.
Okay, so it's, it's in the other part of the language. So this would be making sure that this language makes it clear to voters what they're looking at if they don't dig into the rest of the ballot.
This is the ballot measure itself?
This is the ballot question. So on the actual ballot, this is what people would check, yes or no. And then the code language that Catherine was referencing is what would be in the sample ballot in the voter guide.
I think that's too complicated.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote on that. I wouldn't, I don't know what it's saying. I mean, I do, but if I weren't me, I wouldn't.
This is your opportunity to suggest revisions.
Yes.
The only limit you have, well, a few limits, correct the form, 75-word maximum, and it's got to be a fair and impartial summary of what is in the ballot measure.
I would cut it in half, depending on the number of words. You don't need all those words, it gets confusing.
I would say to make the... To make the city's growth management system consistent with existing law.
Do we have a word smith in the audience, somebody that could figure out what to say?
Why don't you take a few stabs at it, and I'm going to type it out, and then we can try to...
We can come back to it.
We could also do that. We could take a recess, or we could pause this item, move on to other things while staff works on something.
Why don't we move on to another item? Can we do that?
Actually, let's take a break first, and then I'll come back to the second.
Welcome back. To be continued, the wording.
Okay, thank you for that. Actually, I was having flashbacks to a previous measure that we did. And we were pressed up against the word limit. And we spent like a half an hour doing this live in front of everybody. And we kept counting the words. I don't think that'll be an issue tonight. So staff went back. We had a good discussion. We've got a couple of different options that Okowi will share with you. And then you can talk through what your preferences are. And let's just nail down the wording right now, if that's okay.
All right, I was just changing up the order to make this make more sense. So the top one you'll see is the original that we are all looking at. The second is an additional option. And then the third is also an additional option.
I don't think we ought to be talking about residential growth at all. I think that shouldn't be part of it. What we're doing is changing a map. We've already got residential growth limitations put in place. Measure D doesn't have anything to do with this particular ballot measure. So I'd like to leave the words residential development or residential growth out, if we can.
I do want to clarify, this ballot measure would amend Measure D. So it has everything to do with the measure. It would amend the Measure D as far as the area that it's applicable to.
Yeah, just the map.
Just the map portion of it. But I just want to be clear, doing this ballot measure amends Measure D. So I think it's important to be clear on that.
Yeah, you're right. It's confusing for people. They don't know what you're talking about when you start talking about.
We want to simplify this as best we can.
Yeah. I like the second one, to provide consistency and application of the Half Moon Bay downtown area. Shall the town center map? And the residents are. Shall the town center map be amended to match that of the downtown map already in use in the local coastal land use plan?
That sounds good.
But you're suggesting we remove any references to Measure D or the residential growth limitations ordinance?
Yes, I think people don't understand it. And they're saying, oh, they're going to do limitations on residential growth? That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a map. And we know that the map ultimately does that. But we're already using that map. So we're not really trying to change residential growth.
To provide consistency and application of Measure D to the Half Moon Bay downtown area, shall the town center map be amended to match that of the town town map in the local coastal land use plan? So you know it has something to do with Measure D. Leave out all that residential growth limitation stuff.
Except I.
Catherine's got something to say.
The main thing I had to say was just to say, when Measure D was originally proposed to the voters, the question was, shall the ordinance amending the residential growth limitation ordinance be adopted? Measure D is called the Residential Growth Limitations Ordinance. And so I don't want to hide the ball. You know, the ballot question does need to be fair and impartial and informative. And so I just want to make sure we are clear in terms of what it is amending.
Using those words makes it unclear. It may be clear to you and me, but to the general public, they don't know what those words really mean.
Why don't you just say, to provide consistency in mapping of the downtown, Half Moon Bay downtown area, rather than application of the downtown area? To provide consistency in mapping of the Half Moon Bay downtown area, shall the town center map and the city's residential growth limitations ordinance be amended to be consistent with the downtown map and the city's land use plan?
I agree that is fair and impartial and accurate. And I think actually to provide consistency in mapping is a better wording.
After the word ordinance, you could put parentheses, Measure D. Or you could write Measure D parentheses, AKA Residential Growth Limitation Ordinance. I don't know.
There are so many people here, they won't know what Measure D is, I think.
Right.
They know that, but they don't know what Residential Growth Limitations.
I have a simplification suggestion. Let's forget it. Okay? I'll tell you why. It's going to cost at least $10,000. It is confusing. It still needs to go to the Coastal Commission. It could take a long time. And the reality is, it's not going to make major, any difference in reality as to who gets built where and when. It's like figuring out how many angels can dance on the head of a pin. And I think that our staff's time and our council's time can better be spent with, for example, the next item, which is going to make a real difference to people, the sales tax. So I just think we should just drop it, period. That's my suggestion.
The question is, will having this ordinance in the map there avoid unnecessary challenges to Measure D allocations and interpretation, et cetera? Which is going to take up more staff time or planning commission time too, right?
I believe consistency is always better. If you have multiple, you know, things going on, you know, people are going to want to use the interpretation that benefits them the most, right? And you're going to get into arguments about it. You might as well just keep everything consistent. $10,000 is worth it for things to be consistent. That's my opinion.
Yeah, it's worth, I mean, the challenges.
The question is, consistent with what? People don't know what that means.
It's okay. To provide consistency in mapping, shall the town center map and the city's residential growth limitations ordinance?
Oh, my goodness, what is the city's residential growth limitations ordinance?
People are not dumb.
People don't know what it is. They're not stupid. They just don't have your history.
I think it's fine the way it is right now, the way it's been amended. It's fine.
I have a quick question, Okowi. Do we have the terms town center map and downtown map flipped? Okay, I'm going to fix that.
I'd like to ask the public what they think. Do they understand what this means? How many of you that don't work for the city understand what this means? I'm doing it.
You're pushing it.
I pushed it.
Ease up now.
I think as amended, it's fine.
I move that we don't press, put any Measure D amendments on the November ballot. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Would we like a roll call?
Is there a discussion or do you want a roll call vote?
Roll call. Roll call.
Councilmember Brownstone?
No.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rabeck?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
No.
Motion carries.
All right, that's the end of that.
We just saved the city $10,000.
So to be clear, based on that motion, we're not going to proceed with anything on the ballot related to Measure D. But we did get direction tonight, in the future, to bring back the administrative piece for discussion, as well as other administrative things that we can do to improve the process, correct? Great, thank you.
Thank you. We should have done that at the beginning. Saves a lot of time. Thank you, Harvey. Let's move on. We're moving on to resolutions and staff reports. Go to item 3A.
Yes, thank you. Hopefully, this one will be a little simpler. But as directed at the June City Council meeting, staff is returning with a resolution that would place a half cent sales tax increase ballot measure on November's ballot. We, since the last meeting, we did conduct five community meetings with various groups in the city, as well as a citywide town hall, to provide information on the city's budget, its priorities, and information on the potential tax measure. Overall, the feedback was positive. And I think it was good to get the community to kind of understand the deficit that the city is facing and that we went through ways to try and narrow that. There's also the question tonight of whether the City Council would want to draft an argument in favor. And if so, you could select up to two council members that would draft that ballot argument. And happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions from the council? No questions?
I have a question.
No question?
So is it possible to do two separate motions? One to put it in the ballot and one to do, figure out the argument piece?
It should be two motions, yes.
Okay.
And then I do have one hand raised on Zoom, if you're ready for public comment.
Can you please address public comment?
Hazel?
I'm sorry, it was an error of me having my hand raised. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have any more comments? Nope.
No other comments?
Councilmember? No? Ready to make your resolution?
I move that we consider adoption by a four fifths vote of a resolution setting the city of Half Moon Bay transactions and use sales tax funding measure on the November 5th, 2024 general election ballot to seek voter approval of a proposed half cent sales tax.
I'll second that.
Do we have a roll call?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rabeck?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I make, I move. Wait a second. This has to be phrased as a yes or no, doesn't it? Because the language here doesn't lend itself to.
What you would do is you would make a motion to appoint an ad hoc committee made up of one or two council members to draft the argument in favor for the sales tax measure.
Okay.
Do we not have to make a decision first, whether we want to actually pursue?
Yes, you could discuss that, yeah.
I think we should discuss whether or not the council should take a role, pluses and minuses. I can go first on that. I don't think we should actively promote it. I think, given where we are financially, I think we have to ask the voters, do you want to, you know, pass a half cent sales tax? Given that people are feeling overburdened right now, I don't feel comfortable promoting a tax. I want to give them the option. But in general, the feedback I've gotten is, you know, fairly negative. And I think we just put it out there. And, you know, we have to educate. Here's why we're putting it on the ballot here, the issues. But as for promoting it, I don't feel comfortable having the City Council do that.
Move forward.
Well. Well, I don't know who, when you say you're generally hearing people aren't too thrilled with it. We hired an outside vendor, which, and we got a and their results were reported in open city council meeting that people actually felt positive and determined that would probably pass. So I'm going with what they said. I think that if we have a ballot up there and there's only negative arguments against it, then we miss an opportunity to simply present, you know, the same positive arguments that were already summarized during our council sessions. So why miss the opportunity? Because I think there will potentially be certain organizations that have nothing to do with Half Moon Bay, who would put their statement on. They always do any tax, right? You know, I'm talking about those organizations. So they'll put something up there and why not take that opportunity to? But I'm interested in what staff thinks. Also, having more experience with ballot initiatives and any thoughts? And based on everything we heard from our vendor and?
I think with a tax measure, there's high probability that someone would submit an argument opposed with general anti-tax rhetoric. And you can't guarantee that someone from the public would submit an argument in favor. So if that were the only argument to appear, then that's the only argument that appears. And so the council could, you know, just use that opportunity to explain why this measure was placed on the ballot and that it will help the city's deficit to maintain services that the community gets.
I think the city as an entity can educate about, you know, our finances. And I think, you know, I've always taken the, the position that I'm going to willingly and happily support whatever the voters choose to do in a ballot measure, rather than advocate for it. I'd like to educate, but not necessarily advocate and take a position. I have no problem with us putting out educational materials. But as for an advocacy, I don't feel comfortable in that role.
But if we are voting on it and you vote to put the ballot, to measure on the ballot, then you are advocating by voting to put it on the ballot.
No, I'm interested in giving the voters a choice.
We have our strategist here tonight that can also speak to this, if you like. Rob?
Thanks. Mayor and council, just some notes on the ballot arguments themselves. There's been a change in state law this year that prints the names of the signers of the arguments, pro and con, right on the ballot. So it's not necessarily even in the ballot pamphlet, but it's right on the ballot. And so if you don't submit an argument, you could have a scenario where it will say, who supports this measure? No one. And who opposes it? Whoever submits the anti-argument. There's also the potentiality that someone else may submit a argument in favor, that the council would then have no say over what that argument would say. It may not reflect what the council wants the community to hear.
Yeah, if I, if I may, you know, as, as Jessica mentioned, we have done a series of meetings with the community. And we were really upfront with each of those presentations that we weren't there to promote the, the ballot measure. We weren't there to promote a tax. We were there to provide facts and information, because there's a lot of misinformation out there. And we just want voters to be armed with the facts, because as we know, in the absence of facts, people will create their own. So again, this is your prerogative. I would say, though, if you wanted to put an argument in favor, I think it could still meet the, the needs of what Councilmember Riddick said, which is, it doesn't need to be promoting. It, it, it could just simply lay out the facts related to it, pretty simply. So if, if you wanted to do that, I think you could agree that it would be written in a way that it's not promotional, but just fact-based and informative.
So just, Matthew, I just better understand, you are recommending for the council to have an ad hoc committee to, to address this? Is that?
I, I would, I would say yes. As your city manager, I think proactively getting the facts out there on the ballot would be an important step in this. Yes.
Thank you for clarification.
If we're taking that approach, you know, letter and support that it's informative and educational as opposed to, you know, I'm Robert Brownstone and I support this measure. Or you could do that too, if you want.
So the, the resolution would be to recommend for the council to have an ad hoc committee, without promoting the, the tax measure?
We could say to, to write an informative and fact-based argument in favor.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that I move that we form an ad hoc committee to make an informative and
Fact-based argument in favor.
Argument in favor of a half-cent sale tax. That ad hoc committee consisting, consisting of myself and Councilmember Penrose.
And also just to clarify for the council, there can be, be up to five signers. So Councilmembers Brownstone and Penrose could recruit up to three members of the public to also draft this and sign on as signers.
Send your nominations to my email.
I'll second that motion.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Warbeck?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I love when things work out.
Thank you. Moving along to item 3B.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, and Community. Karen Decker, Economic and Community Vitality Manager. I'm so pleased to provide this key update on the Downtown Streetscape Master Plan and to bring this plan before you this evening. It presents a design vision for Main Street. Nothing you will see this evening is a final selection. This is a blueprint that can help inform design decisions for a future phasing. Before we launch into the, the presentation, I just first wanted to thank City Council for the strategic investment. Completing this first project phase enables staff to pursue funding opportunities that can get us toward implementation based on what council decides to carry forward. I also want to thank the Community Stakeholder Group for meeting with the project team periodically to pressure test the concepts as they were being developed. We have a few of them with us this evening. We're joined by some local businesses and just really appreciate them hanging in at this late hour and providing feedback throughout the process. Actually, six members of the original Coastside Recovery Initiative Task Force went on to serve on this Community Stakeholder Group. And so there's this through line between our economic recovery recommendations and the involvement necessary to bring those recommendations to bear.
Karen?
Yes.
Would you mind naming the stakeholder group? I think there are only 12 members, right?
Actually, yes, I know it's small, but they're on that slide.
I can't see it, though.
Yeah.
Karen can't see it either.
Yes. We have Ayesha Barrow, Life Science Care's Bay Area, Kike Pizan, Alas, Ellen Cheery, Half Moon Bay History Association, John Evans, Architect, Kristalyn Geet, Half Moon Bay Coastside Chamber, Colleen Henny, Downtown Business Association, Local Business Owner, Christopher Hopper, Property Representative, Randy Kinghorn, Commercial Real Estate, Marita Leth, Age Friendly Half Moon Bay Coastside, Rolando Madrid, Boys and Girls Club of the Coastside, Suzie Marashi, IDES Hall, Beautification Committee, Irma Rodriguez Mitten, South Coast Sustainable, Jenny Walter, Coast Pride, Local Business Owner, Sandra Winter, Senior Coastsiders, Age Friendly Half Moon Bay Coastside. You're welcome. So thank you so much for that through line that the task force members provide and, and joining the stakeholder group as well. And then I just really briefly wanted to thank my city colleagues. Thank you, Matthew, for your guidance and your leadership. Thank you to the project team, John, Irma, Julissa. We've been meeting for the better part of a year now to bring this product before you. And I just also want to acknowledge our amazing team of consultants. Erica Wood, who elevates every project she touches. Tool Design for bringing their professionalism, their subject matter expertise, their flexibility. I never handled a change order. I never had to come before you and ask for a contract amendment because they kept the project on schedule and on budget. So from a project management perspective, it's been a real delight. As I give you a moment to just briefly root yourselves back in those project goals, just wanted to point out that a vibrant space serves an economic purpose. It also serves a community purpose. And that was part of our North Star for this work. We also tried to strike a balance between preserving the existing character of downtown while also not shying away from improvements that would make it more safe, make it more accessible, make it more vibrant. Sometimes our community embraces tourism and sometimes they resist it. So we try to prioritize improvements that benefit both residents and visitors. And just a key takeaway that I've, I've mentioned in prior presentations, but it's really important to the project team, touches on that last bullet about centering community voices and guidance. Great care and time was taken to ensure diversity within all of these meetings. And I'm really proud of the way the entire project team leaned in, leaned into some new outreach strategies with a lot of thought and intentionality. There's an entire appendices at the end of the plan that details all of the public engagement efforts. I mentioned some of the engagement and guidance that happened at the community level and also wanted to point out that the project team had strategic touchpoints and feedback loops with council and with commissions and with committees throughout the duration of the project. The project flow occurred as intended. It started with a review of existing plans and studies. It had an evolving design phase and the result culminated into the plan itself. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Cindy Zurgur, Principal at Tool Design, to walk us through the plan.
Great, thank you, Karen. Thank you, Council, Mayor, and this opportunity to present to you on the, the resulting Streetscape Master Plan. It's been such a pleasure working with city staff and the broader community at large, really, on this effort. And we're grateful to, to be at this point. As Karen said tonight, I am going to provide an overview of the planned document, what it includes. Essentially, this, this next set of slides are screenshots directly from the master plan, which hopefully you've had a chance to review. There are six sections in total and additional supporting appendices, as Karen mentioned. In previous council updates, we've provided some in-depth look at some of the concepts. And while I will highlight these, I'm not going to spend too much time on the details as we have previously. So without further ado, here we go. The first section, of course, is an introduction. And it really sets the stage for the work we did. It highlights the purpose, the process, and the timeline, and really nests our work within the context of previous planning efforts. Like Karen said, one of our first tasks was to look at previous efforts, the Slow Urban Design Plan and certainly the Coastside Recovery Initiative. And, and as Karen pointed out earlier, the Streetscape Master Plan is a direct result of the recommendations and the actions that came out of that effort. We, the following section focuses really on the outreach and engagement efforts we undertook. Again, as Karen mentioned, a pretty exhaustive process that we undertook as the cornerstone of the engagement was a two-part, multi-day design workshop where we were in the town and working at the library for roughly six days in total and held many different meetings with stakeholders, went out to community organizations, and held public meetings at the IDES Hall. The team also deployed an online survey. Excuse me, Erica really led that effort as a way to cast an engagement net even wider. And this section in particular details the exhaustive communications campaign the city undertook. City staff was commendable in, in all that they did to reach out to different organizations and draw them into different engagement opportunities. And as Karen mentioned, there are supplemental engagement summaries that detail the process. Those are in the part of Appendix B. The existing conditions includes observations throughout Main Street. We were looking at Main Street from the one to the one and, and some of the adjacent areas. It's organized into three sections outlined here. Heritage Main, which includes the four blocks, of course, south of the bridge. North Main, this northern, northern segment from the bridge to Highway One. And then the southern portion, of course, from Main Street, from Correia's, Correia's to south to the one. And community engagement feedback is actually, and local observations are also integrated into this section. And so the, the next section is really the heart of the document and presents a vision, really, for how Main Street could involve into a more, evolve into a more cohesive space. It starts with a design vision and specifically some design principles we set as guidance for us as we endeavor to create a new conceptual design. Again, this coming really from the community process. Central to our design approach was creating a space that would function for all ages and all abilities. And particularly for Heritage Main Street, that, that real downtown core. We, we, we call, we employed what we call universal design principles, creating a barrier-free environment. And I'll talk a little bit more about that when I show you that design. But as Karen mentioned again, we wanted to create concepts in direct response to community feedback and what we heard and create a cohesive approach for all the entirety of Main Street. Certainly, a level of detail was put on Heritage Main as the, as the kind of economic and social downtown core. Leveraging or thinking about the rich culture and diversity here in our design concepts and really thinking about that, the coastal theme of, of downtown or of, of Half Moon Bay is part of it. And as Karen mentioned also, future phasers would include future design development, is what we call it, and, and final design. So no decisions on terms of the material palette that I'll highlight have been made at this time. So on to the Heritage Main Street concept. This is, it's organized very similar to existing conditions, so we cover Heritage Main first. This, this area features a flush concept, which much more generous sidewalk space, going from six, 10 feet to 16, and many different design features, which I won't necessarily highlight today. But I did want to mention, in this instance, in what you're seeing in the concept, is a change from angled parking to parallel parking. And naturally, that's going to create a parking loss on the downtown, on Main Street in these four blocks. But we did think about the perpendicular streets and really formalizing an angled parking regime on those perpendicular streets, which will help in balancing some of that parking on those adjacent streets. The images on the right show a quick rendering of what's existing, of course. And then the proposed is on the, on the bottom there as well. And I mentioned a flush street concept. And the images on the right show what that looks like. We've done this in a number of communities across the country and the result is really a dynamic, flexible space when closed for special events. Because it's flush, it really functions a lot like a plaza. It creates that barrier-free environment. Again, an aspect of designing for an all-ages and all-abilities approach in the downtown core. And the, the page on the left just calls out some of the design features and things like curb bumpouts, parallel parking, planted areas, and areas for more formalized and public seating. North Main Street, the, the signature features I'll, I'll really mention here are incorporating a shared-use path or in a wider sidewalk along the east side to create a safer bicycling and walking environment here and creating critical connections, of course, to key destinations like the high school. Also in this section, we recommend some intersection treatments that improve spaces, spaces and safety at intersections for pedestrians, for cyclists, and motorists as well. Really thinking about those turning movements and, and limiting pedestrian exposure is what we call it, making it a little safer environment. We also developed an idea for a gateway feature to call your attention to Main Street. And that's on the right side of the screen. An arch gateway is sort of the concept here that spans over Main Street, really intended to draw people in and along Main Street. And there's already some funding, funder interest in this feature that the city has, has, has chatted with a couple of different people. South Main, the design strategy is to pull a bit of the Heritage Main idea further south and along that corridor, that part of the corridor. and along that corridor, that part of the corridor as well, integrating green infrastructure to break up the long parking areas. And this helps really with traffic calming along that area and creates an additional human-scale spaces along the corridor. And we couldn't help ourselves. We saw a really wonderful opportunity in Kitty Fernandez Plaza. It's one of, you know, three public spaces throughout the downtown that you have, and really your second-largest. And right now, it is oriented to turn its back on Main Street, and we wanted to really flip that relationship. So, we developed a few different concepts, and this is the one that really took hold, where we created a flexible plaza space allowing for really different programmatic elements throughout here to happen. You could incorporate ample seating. It could be flexible seating. It could be fixed, so really softening the space with some plantings and trees, and formalizing the edges along the private property, not through hardened walls, per se, but simple plantings and vine-screen options in this area. We heard a lot about the need for family-friendly outdoor spaces along Main Street, something that's teen-centered, youth-centered, and this concept really allows for flexibility in different uses and enjoyment during the day. The next section of the plan focuses on the Streetscape palette. That's generally known as the hardscape, the landscape, and the paving treatments that could be incorporated, the furnishings as well. These are all inspired by what we heard from the community and Half Moon Bay's really coastal setting. We provided a couple of different options during the workshops, and we heard loud and clear, we want it to be sort of coastal muted palette with pops of color in the planting plans. These are, again, not final selections, but more of what I would say a mood board or a mood idea of the features we're going for. And as you can see, we looked at local natural designed elements. So, your coastal bluffs really inform the paving pattern we're recommending and other materials we saw in your library redesign, and lots of natural woods and coastal colors. There are additional topics included, including some recommendations to improve wayfinding in and throughout downtown, and how to integrate art throughout the Main Street. For example, you have some wonderful murals. They're beautiful in the downtown Heritage Main Street. Could we bring some of these ideas up to North Main, along some of the building facades, really activate that area? Or could that even be a treatment for some of the alleyways on the ground plane? We also included a section on circulation considerations and recommendations through the downtown, so thinking about truck route movements through the downtown. And lastly, of course, an implementation section where we concluded some planning-level cost estimates. And so, we detailed out cost estimates, again, planning level, I would emphasize at this time, for Heritage Main Street, and then also Kitty Fernandez Plaza. And included in this section is also funding sources, great opportunities, certainly state, local, and federal opportunities to help fund some of the project ideas, and then suggested project phasing as you were to think through how do you implement some of this work. And lastly, I want to leave you with a couple of, additional part of the implementation chapter is some quick wins. So, while, you know, the city's really working toward aligning funding, there are a number of quick wins that the community came up with, and I think actually some of them are already in process or have been installed. So, the downtown Half Moon Bay sign on 92, that was something that certainly the community stakeholder group was very influential in not only recommending but also designing, and is already out there. Some other things like creating an informational kiosk in the downtown, thinking about a street pole banner program. You already have some of that, but could we emphasize that or amplify that? And some other recommendations in that chapter. So, that is it. That's a quick overview of the overall plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Do we have any clarifying questions from my council? No? We're going to move on to our public comment? Or clarifying question?
I can wait till after the public.
Thank you. Amber Stone?
Thank you. My name is Amber Stowe. I am a representative of the Paper Crane on Main Street. We are in our 39th year of business. Thank you for providing a comprehensive master plan in keeping with the feedback at the stakeholders' meeting in fall 2023. Many of our dreams and concerns for the future of downtown Half Moon Bay were addressed and included. However, there are details regarding future maintenance and safety that I feel need to be considered. Starting with the puristhetics, details like benches and lighting should preserve and enhance the coastal craftsman and farm style of historic Main Street. I felt that the lighting examples provided in the master plan might be timeless but are potentially out of step with existing architecture. Moving on to safety concerns, the side block widening is good and necessary and restores Main Street to a human pedestrian scale. However, leveling the streets might present a problem with traffic calming. Extended cab light-duty trucks could turn the two parallel spaces into one, and unless parking is enforced, the space available on Main Street could be halved by oversized vehicles and could even eclipse accessible parking spaces. In the six-foot-wide furnishing zone, I would suggest removable bollards to protect seating pedestrians and storefronts from potential car accidents. Protecting pedestrians when a curb is absent is essential. And moving on to parking, Perrisma, Kelly, Mill, Johnson, and Miramontes should absolutely have angled spaces. But parking along Kelly on the west approach from Cabrillo Highway toward Main Street should maintain its current configuration of parallel parking since extended cabs parked in the angled spaces before Kelly was reconfigured about six years ago reduced that access road to virtually one lane if two cars were parked opposite one another. Since we want to induce demand to favor pedestrians and bicycles downtown, we need to make sure that public transportation routes reflect this. Bullbouts at corners along existing sand trans routes should have clearly marked stops and furniture, and bullbouts at crosswalks should maintain visibility. But if we put trees directly on the corners, as we saw on page 33 of the master plan, it may block the view of pedestrians in the crosswalks. Street improvements on surrounding streets are out of scope with this project, but they should not be out of scope for Half Moon Bay. Multiple corners, including Johnson at Miramontes and Perrisma at Miramontes and others, do not have ADA-accessible sidewalks, and multiple stretches of our sidewalks on Main Street are in severe disrepair or barely exist at all. And if parking is being pushed to adjacent streets, our visitors' first steps in Half Moon Bay should be on complete sidewalks accessible to all.
Thank you. Really good comments. Irma Rodriguez?
Thank you, Council. As a member of the Community Stakeholder Group and a member of the original Coastside Recovery Task Force, I would like to offer my support for the adoption of the Streetscape Master Plan. The process by which this plan was developed was open, creative, and accessible to many diverse stakeholder groups. It was truly a model of best practices of equitable placemaking and just community development. The plan itself is comprehensive and manages to include culturally and historically appropriate design elements while providing creative approaches to our community's highest needs. It enhances the downtown district's current assets and sets the stage for creating a more vibrant, diverse, and sustainable business district. It reduces vehicle congestion and opens avenues for more social interaction and commercial activities for residents and visitors alike. And it preserves the small coastal character of Half Moon Bay that we all cherish while also establishing safe, walkable, and bikeable paths of connection for families and seniors from all parts of town. Committing to this plan for dynamic, modern, and safe streetscapes is a strategic and weighty investment for Half Moon Bay, but it's one that will deliver so many multidimensional benefits and give downtown Half Moon Bay the boost it needs to remain sustainable, vibrant, and supportive for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Irma. Jenny Walters?
Good evening, Mayor Jimenez and council members. My name's Jenny Walter, and as a member of the Community Stakeholder Group for the Streetscape Master Plan and one of the original Coastside Recovery Initiative Task Force members on both the team's vibrant and team thrive, I'd like to share a few remarks about the community engagement process that resulted in this plan and the multiple benefits of the plan's recommendations that it would achieve. First, the breadth of community engagement, outstanding. I mean, just outstanding. Thanks to the small group of thoughtful people at the city and their consultant team, we have this beautiful report that reflects a reimagining of our town with input from the diversity of our community. The city team used multiple engagement strategies: a website, bilingual survey, workshops, focus groups, and street corner discussions, all with terrific visuals. I would like to thank Matthew, John, and especially Karen, Julissa, and Erica for their vision and hard work, which culminated in this plan. And I would like to thank you, council members, for the opportunity to tout the recommendations of this report. The recommendations in the plan would achieve multiple benefits on three fronts. I'd like to highlight a few of them. Economic, environmental, and social. Economic: Visitors, as you know, are often just unaware of our Half Moon Bay downtown. They just completely bypass it. This plan creates wayfinding and signage to make sure visitors know how to get to Main Street shops. It proposes a cohesive design connecting the three areas: south of the bridge, the Heritage Main, and north of Carreras, which will encourage folks to walk the length of our downtown Main Street, increasing our foot traffic to all our shops. And it proposes a parking strategy that improves the pedestrian and bicyclist's experience in terms of access and safety, and offers ways to mitigate the impact of the loss of parking. In this reimagined downtown, the experience for visitors and residents would be enhanced by the proposed environmental changes. So, environmental, second. Trees are selected that are well-adapted to our climate. There are small planting areas that are proposed with drought-resistant grasses and succulents and coastal flowering shrubs. Design palette, as you heard from the presentation, is inspired by the coastal mood and feel of our shoreline and our dunes and our local cultures. And on the north Main Street, along the bike path, I've had many a flat tire. I've seen lots of potential accidents right by ACE hardware. So, when you look at that northern area, that's all been fixed up as proposed in this master plan. And it connects that area, the north, to the heritage, to the south, which is going to be much more cohesive and really encourage all of us to enjoy, as well as our visitors, to enjoy Half Moon Bay. Is that me? I'm done? Okay, so I should stop?
Actually, go ahead and finish up, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So many social spaces are created by this plan. By widening the sidewalks, folks walking along won't have to walk in single file, can actually have conversations uninterrupted by stepping around trees and other folks. All the bumpouts are going to have all those wonderful gathering spaces for people to hang out. And then there's also the cool design options for Kitty Fernandez Park, converting the underutilized space to a vibrant park so that all of our kiddos and all of us can enjoy. And thank you very much for the opportunity to cheer you on as you delve into this plan, and I wholeheartedly support it. So, thank you for the opportunity and the extension of time.
Thank you, Jenny. We have Colleen Hedy?
Hi there. Thanks for hearing comments here. I just wanted to put in a few words about this new cityscape project as you're making decisions on a path forward. I own two shops on Main Street, Jupiter in Maine and Juno's Little Mercantile, and I'm a co-founder of the Half Moon Bay Downtown Association, the Half Moon Bay Wine and Jazz Festival, and Trick or Treat on Main Street. I have five years of experience working daily on Main Street, and I can only offer my very short perspective. Half Moon Bay has been discovered, and we've all seen the crowds on the weekends explode over the past few years and certainly post-COVID. The toothpaste is out of the tube, so to speak, and so there's really no going back to the quiet sleepy town of past decades, as much as some folks might like to fantasize about that. Growing pains are real, and being married to a sixth-generation coast sider, I understand the resistance to change. But we must change in order for our community to remain safe, to accommodate locals and visitors alike, as well as our children who go to school, eat, and play downtown. This is a true story. Last week at Juno's, I was asked twice by customers for a pen and paper to write down an accident report two days in a row. The first witnessed a hit-and-run and wanted to take down the guy's license plate. The second himself hit a car and wanted to leave his information on the windshield of the victim. And this is for cars parked right outside my shop. Today, I was driving home in the morning on Main Street, and the oncoming traffic were all halfway into my lane because of large trucks parked in the street. I mean, at a minimum, the city should put compact-only signs and laws on those spots. We should not have big construction trucks parked on Main Street. It should be illegal. I've been on the stakeholders committee since the first walkthrough by Tool Design and have offered feedback at every point along the way of this process. I believe the city has done an amazing job meticulously gathering feedback and input, and Tool Design has done a gorgeous job crafting a design that encompasses the rich history of the town, the diversity in its population, and many number of uses, all while incorporating a modern, safe, and educated approach to city design, which is their expertise. The trees on Main Street are tearing up the sidewalks, making them a hazard to walk on, navigate, people, curbs, trees, and the various other items in the way. We need more generous sidewalks to accommodate the thousands of people coming into town every weekend. The parking on Main Street is hazardous. The wayfinding from 92 is sorely lacking. Green spaces are nonexistent. We can do better. Lastly, among all the criticisms and complaints and resistance to change within the community, I respectfully hope the council members remember that tourism does pay a large part of the city's bills. Approximately 70% of our shop's revenue is from visitors, daytrippers and overnighters alike. We are actively working to bring people to downtown, encouraging them to stay overnight. We have a real opportunity here to improve our downtown for the better for visitors, residents, coast siders, and everyone, and we feel it's a much worthwhile endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Sandy Winter?
Good evening, Mayor Jimenez, Vice Mayor Roba, council members, staff, community members. Thank you so much for having me here. And the disadvantage of being one of the last people to speak is they already said everything I was going to say. Just to reiterate, I strongly advocate that you adopt this wonderfully-produced report. It was very inclusively done, so you can rely on the work that was done because you know it incorporates a community perspective. The professionals involved at Tool Design were just amazing. I guess the one perspective that I can add that hasn't been fully covered here is that creating this type of environment is age-friendly for everybody. So, it's good for the seniors that I work with so much, but it's also good for families, for people with disabilities, and particularly the area around Kitty Fernandez Park. It's very close to the senior center. It's currently an underutilized space, so this is a wonderful opportunity to provide yet another space where the many seniors at the senior housing campus can go to spend time and to engage with others socially, which we know is so important. So, I agree with everything that's been said, and I hope that you will move forward with adopting this report. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one speaker?
Yes. Ayesha?
Good evening. My name is Ayesha Peron.
My name is Ayesha Behar, and I was part of the Coastside Recovery Task Force, as well as the Community Stakeholder Group, and I would also like to provide full support for the project. As we all know, the landscape of the coast is changing, all for the better. There are more young families that are moving in, seniors also living in great harmony, and now we'll also be creating special farm workers, which is in the news. There has also been a lot of recognition by so many others outside of Half Moon Bay of the beauty, and also the really easy access of our town, and that's attracted a lot of... I, for example, live right by Kitty Fernandez, and I see that as such a raw opportunity for doing something much more with that space and for creating a convening space.
I think she may have lost service. Ayesha, do you want to re-raise your hand if you want to finish your comments? She was here. I think she may not have service.
Okay. Comments, council members? Vice Mayor?
I think it's a wonderful plan. It's not perfect, nothing is. I really like the wider sidewalks on Heritage Main Street. I think that is a wonderful idea. In terms of the short-term wins that were mentioned in the report, you saw the conceptual picture of the arch, which they claim it should be on Main Street. I know that working with Caltrans is challenging, to say the least, but it's clear to me that if you want to put such a welcoming arch to direct people that are coming into town, it belongs on Highway 92. Not easy, but that would be my suggestion, to try to work with Caltrans to get that installed. It was mentioned that there's already a sign. If you look at the sign, it's hard to see. It's not really what we would want, to make sure that people coming down from the bayside would actually know that Heritage Main Street exists. So that's my small suggestion, but in general, I think it's a wonderful plan.
Jessica, Ayesha is back on...
Ayesha?
Thank you. My apologies. My service on my cellphone was dropping down, so I'm trying to hear from my computer. So my name is Ayesha Behar. I'm going to start my comments over. And I was part of the Coastside Recovery Task Force, as well as the Community Stakeholder Group, and I wanted to provide my full support for the project. As we all know, the landscape of the coast is changing for the better. More families are coming in, young families, and we also have seniors that have lived here in great harmony. And now I'm so excited that we'll also be creating some space for farm workers, and that's amazing. And the new thing is that there is an increased recognition by others outside of Half Moon Bay that this is a beautiful town, and it's an easily accessible town, and that's attracted a lot of visitors. I, for example, live right by Kitty Fernandez Park, and I see it as such a raw opportunity for doing something much more with that space and for creating a convening space. And this master plan continues to build on the success of the library, which is such a vibrant place where so many parts of the community, young and old, congregate. The representation of art throughout the space is also a nice feature that can really liven the town and represent its full diversity. And finally, I wanted to give a nod to the remarkable engagement process. It was unparalleled. We were provided so many thoughtful options, and the feedback was incorporated. So I want to thank Karen, Lisa, Erica, Matthew, and the entire team, and again, iterate my full support, and I hope that the city council will move forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Yeah. It's beautiful. I am really, really amazed at what a wonderful job you guys have done. It just speaks to the good sense that staff has and the expertise that staff has, and our wonderful consultants, Tool Design and Erica, both. I have a couple of thoughts about it, and one is I don't want to see beige streets. I know that's the color of sand, but it's also a color that bores me to death. And so I'd like us to look at a color scape that has a little more liveliness to it. We have a... 30% of our population is Latino. They don't wear beige. There are primary colors, and they bring primary colors to our downtown. And I don't want to see our color scape reflecting a blandness that is maybe easy to work with. Maybe it doesn't show the dirt very much, but I'd like to look at it a second way. The other thought that I had is I love the plaza idea. I love eliminating sidewalk curbs, but I am very fearful that this will be dangerous for children. When I was raising my kids, it was always, you can run to the end of the sidewalk, but you have to stop at the end of the sidewalk, and the kids knew what that meant. There may be some confusion. I'm sure there are ways around this, certainly eliminating trees or planters right in intersections might be a way to do that. But I agree with what one of the former speakers mentioned is we have to watch out for our kids. But great job, guys, just amazing. Thank you.
Comments? I like it. What's there to say? One of the things I am concerned, and I would like to see that we actually promote parking on other streets. You know, if we're going to eliminate parking on Main Street, you know, we have to promote that we have a Johnson Street, we have Purissima Street, and make it safe. You know, not a lot of people know, especially our visitors on the weekends, that they can actually park on those other streets, especially they're new to Half Moon Bay. So we need signage on Main Street that will direct them. I know somebody worked on a map, you know, of a parking downtown Half Moon Bay. If there's a way that map can be accessible to visitors, you know, visitor's center, that way, you know, for example, I see a lot of traffic coming in on the Chamber of Commerce, or the OCC. There's a lot of people coming in, asking for directions or restaurants, to the beach, things to do in Half Moon Bay. So that'd be a perfect way for us to show the map, you know, where to park. If you're new to an area, you're going to be parking downtown Main Street, that's it. You know, they have Johnson, you have San Benito Street, you have Purissima, you have Church Street. So in that, I don't see any signage, and I'm always walking downtown. So, you know, if we could do that, yes, thinking about the elimination of parking, do parallel parking, and I think that's going to actually benefit to us, you know, to bigger vehicles, is they're more difficult to parallel park. So of course, they're going to be pushed to the outer streets. And other than that, the arch, with Harvey, the arch should be on 92, to be pointing the, you know, where is downtown, you know, Half Moon Bay, sorry, downtown. A map for the murals, more color on the walls, that represent our community, more representation of who is here. The area that you have in Bay, don't forget, farming, ranching, fishing, okay? Make sure that's represented. If you remember the Fourth of July Parade, people were crazy when they saw 52 horses, you know, in the parade. So don't leave the horses out of anything, you know, because they're attractive. So other than that, Kitty Fernandez Park, you know, the plaza needs to be used. You know, it's not used very much. It's the wall, whatever that is, is blocking, you know, the use of that area, and we have to make it, you know, we have to make it useful for community, for visitors, seniors. It would be a great benefit to the restaurant right across the street. Who knows, maybe an ice cream shop right across the street, you know, a little stand. I'm just throwing ideas out there. Other than that, I really, I'm supportive of this plan. Thank you for all your great work and everybody who took time to participate in it. One more comment, please.
I also wanted to say, I like the idea of the arch on Main Street at 92. So as you're driving down Main Street, you see the arch and you turn left into downtown. I don't think it has to be on 92, as long as it's at 92. So.
I think it was a brilliant process, you know, one of the great engagement processes that we've had in this town. I can't remember anything like it. So congratulations to everybody who participated and made it all happen. I did appreciate the comments from Ms. Stowe, and as somebody else mentioned, it's a, you know, good plan, not perfect. And I don't necessarily agree with everything in it, to be honest. And for me, it's like parking, parking, parking. And I don't like the idea of pushing parking to other areas, because that's not really dealing with the parking problem. And you're just, you know, pushing a hazardous problem someplace else. I still believe that we need a parking garage someplace, that that would solve a lot of problems, but that would have to be financed jointly by businesses, you know, as well as the city. I don't think there's grants for that kind of thing, maybe small business grants, I don't know, but we need a parking garage. The thing that gave me pause, looking at the plan for Main Street, given that we just have one road, two roads in and out, Main Street becomes, as you know, when people are returning home on the weekends, Main Street is jammed. And Main Street functions, would function as emergency access, you know, if we had some sort of event where people had to leave. And I think we want to be careful with how we design Main Street, and we want to keep, you know, emergency access in mind. And I'm going to be looking very carefully as projects come forward to make sure that they address issues of pedestrian and vehicle safety, as well as emergency access. I'm also a little concerned about the at-grade sidewalks for safety reasons. You mentioned children. I like the idea of bollards, something that creates some sort of barrier that would protect people. You know, you're reading the news, horrible events, trucks running over people on sidewalks. You know, we want to make sure that it's as safe as possible. But I love so many of the other features, you know, the murals, the public spaces. I think we want to match the physical infrastructure with more events, you know, more music, more festivals, just, you know, bringing people downtown. I think Carter Park will help with that and generate more foot traffic for our businesses. So I think it's a great plan. It's going to cost money to do it, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but as we implement it, there are going to be, you know, sequoia issues, you know? It's not like we just fund it now and everything will happen. It's going to have to go through a planning process. There's going to have to be public noticing and more outreach. So this is like a long-term plan, so we want to, you know, set expectations for that. I like the idea of low-hanging fruit and early wins. I think, given our budget, that's the kind of thing to focus on, you know, in the near term. But overall, it's a great plan, and the goals are good, and they're well-informed by public input, so we can feel really comfortable about that. But going forward, I want us to keep in mind parking, parking, parking. There's many more uses coming downtown. There's going to be CSM, the farmworker housing. You know, we need a plan, we need a parking plan, and everybody needs to be engaged on that. So again, congratulations to everybody. Thank you for all your hard work, and thanks for the input from the council. Appreciate it.
Well, all I really feel right now is very positive about an incredible plan. You know, great leadership and great planning requires a vision. It always has. It requires a great vision, and this plan creates a fantastic vision. It's a vision that will attract all members of the community, it'll attract grant money, it will attract investment, and I'm sure of that. It's a vision that, you know, when I just started looking at it and hearing what people were saying, it creates, it creates a sense of community. This is a vision that creates community, and it creates a sense of belonging, which in turn, at the end of the day, what you're really going for is a feeling, right? How do you feel being in this space? Do you feel pride? Do you feel you really want to be here? And that's what this vision creates. It creates a place where people will really want to come, and they'll feel like, you know, I like being here. I like sticking around and staying for a while. I like seeing, sitting here and watching people go by and seeing members of the community. And if you're a visitor, can bring your family and see an environment where, yeah, I'd like to return and come back here. This is really a terrific community. That's what a great vision creates, and that's the kind of vision this master plan creates. So thank you. This is a great presentation, and thanks for all the hard work that went into this.
Looks like we are ready for your resolution.
I move that we adopt the downtown streetscape master plan.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rabeck?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Great job. Move on to item 3C.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Mike Noche, Housing Programs Manager for the city. Given the late hour, and I'm going to lean on our staff report for being in good detail and happy to answer questions, I'm going to move through the presentation fairly quickly this evening, given the time. Just as a very quick recap, November 7th is when, 2023 is when City Council first started talking about the Tenant Protections Plan. Later, a few months later, multiple times, we came back to City Council for a first reading in January, a second reading on February 6th for a residential rental registration ordinance. Following the ordinance passing City Council, the city contracted with a contractor... Following the ordinance passing, City Council, the city contracted with a contractor named Tolemy, who handles the registration portal. Of the units, we worked with Tolemy to identify suspected rental units in town. 1,300 units were identified by Tolemy. As mentioned in the staff report, this data was not readily or easily available to us as staff prior to having Tolemy in place. They've combed through a lot of data to identify suspected rental units and there'll be additional information that we'll, we'll comb through and I'll get to that very quickly. Staff performed, prior to having that listed number of units, we still provided a number of outreach through e-news and other, other methods. Soon as we identified those rental units in June, so just last month, when we opened a free registration for the first year, we released letters to folks, which many folks who maybe don't follow city communications were maybe the first time they've heard about it or don't follow city council meetings, this was the first time they heard about the program. So we did see an uptick in correspondence to staff, questions coming in, which led us to requesting and suggesting a extension of this program or at least the first, excuse me, not the program itself, but the first year of early registration and that being free. So we have, through the city manager's authority, extended things through today, the 16th, and we're recommending an extension through the 31st for the no fee for this first year, just part of the launch. The fee would then be charged $75 per unit on the first of August. And we would also use our discretion in regards to any late fees and penalties. Our recommendation there is to softly start that on September 1st because we feel that is reasonable. We're open to discussing that further with you this evening. We, as staff, want to thank the landlords that have registered. We have seen a lot of registrations come through, thus the amount of questions we've received as staff. So 589 as of today, this is updated from the number that's in your staff report. So we've seen 18 that came in over the last few days. Again, our, our thought process on the no fee period being extended to the end of this month is that it'll incentivize additional registrations. And with the more registrations that come in, it'll ultimately help us on the enforcement aspect of this program. The more registrations we have in and confirmed units, it'll offset the number of follow-ups we need to do on combing through suspected rentals in the community. The one key provision, and this is the last point that we've included in the recommendation for you this evening, we would really appreciate your feedback, is staff has made a determination through the definition of a rental unit as well as a tenant. We've received a number of phone calls and emails about a family member occupying a unit that is owned by the owner, but they themselves do not live there. So it is not the owner's primary residence. They are allowing a family member in most cases to utilize the unit, often at either no rental char, no rent charge, or that's what's being shared to us, or a minimal or subsidized amount. That being said, occupants are still tenants in our opinion, through their entitled use of the unit. So there's a nuance there that this isn't an exemption that we purposely included because we want to get a, a good grasp on the number of rental units or what are essentially operating as rental units in the community. That being said, we do have, I want to make a note that maybe wasn't as clear in the staff report, that there is an exemption for ADU. So if there's a primary residence in an ADU and the owner is occupying the primary residence, but renting the ADU to a family member, if it's an immediate family member as defined in the ordinance, they are exempt. So I can go into this in a little more detail. I know the staff report goes into that and I'm trying to be brief, so I don't mean to skip over things or move things, through things quicker than, than needed. But I'm happy to go back on any additional information that's needed for, for the discussion this evening. So I'll leave it at that and happy to answer questions.
Councilman, do you have any clarifying questions?
Mike, has there been any pushback from potential landlords, you know, when you get these letters? You got any return letters that are threatening or anything like that?
Yes, Vice Mayor. So some folks are reluctant, reluctant to register. Be honest with you, we've heard allotted feedback from, on a number of different things, some that feel like this is an invasion of privacy. And we, we've made it very clear on the privacy policies on our, on the website, we've posted the third-party contractor that we're using their privacy policy as well to make that even more visible. So we don't, you know, our interpretation is that we're not violating any privacy laws or anything in that matter, but that, those are concerns that have come up just in general with data that is being collected from property owners for this program.
Any more clarifying questions or comments from council? Nope. Public comment, no? Going once, going twice? So that, so we, resolution to extend the motion here?
I move that we adopt a resolution of the no-fee registration period for the residential rental registration program from June 30th, 2024 to July 31st, 2024, with a $75 per unit fee commencing on August 1st, 2024. And to affirm, based upon the definition of a residential rental unit and tenant included in Chapter 6.02 of the municipal code, that landlords are required to register any rental unit regardless of whether rent is charged or not.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rarback?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item three D.
Maybe Maz, before you start, I'll just jump in. I've given this disclaimer a few times, but we have lots of contracts that we issue for services that are either beyond the bandwidth of staff on a day-to-day basis or specialized expertise. In past meetings, there's been a recommendation that when these come back for renewal on an annual basis, that at least periodically, we bring them on to our regular agenda instead of a consent agenda. So that's just an opportunity to have a discussion about it, ask questions. That's what we're doing tonight with these. And so I think I heard brevity is key, but of course, we're, we're happy to take questions and answer them tonight as well. Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the public. Maz Wazurginie again, and I'm here with Mr. Todd Seeley, our Public Works Superintendent.
There's no light on this one. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. As Maz said, my name is Todd Seeley. I'm the Public Works Superintendent and we're going to go through a staff report regarding to median maintenance on the highways. All right, perfect. All right, next slide, please. A little background about what we're talking about here. All the highway medians in Hafun Bay are currently being maintained by Laurel Landscaping. This work includes all the medians that were added to the maintenance list in 2022 when the Highway 1 South project was completed. This work represents logistical and safety challenges to city staff and the work has been contracted out to avoid these conflicts. Next slide, please. Upon city staff request, Laurel provided a monthly estimate for services to continue maintaining the landscape medians and shoulders along Highway 1 and Highway 92, for which the city is responsible. The fiscal impact for this contract is $51,564 and can be funded and has been funded through the Public Works Maintenance Budget. This number for this year represents a modest 3.3% increase over last year, which is slightly lower than CPI, where we're able to negotiate a little bit lower price with them. And the scope of services includes weed removal and general cleaning of all of the city-maintained medians on Highway 1 and Highway 92. Next slide, please. Our recommendation this evening is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Laurel Landscaping, Inc., to provide for citywide median landscape maintenance services for fiscal year 2024, '25 in an amount not to exceed $51,564. Brevity is the key.
Any clarifying questions?
There we go.
Comments? No? Make a motion, please.
I was just going to second it after you read it. I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Laurel Landscaping to provide citywide landscape maintenance services for fiscal year 2024 through '25 in an amount not to exceed $51,564.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rarback?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item three E.
This one works now, so we're good to go. This one is slightly more exciting than the last one. We'll get through it just as quick though, I promise. The overview of this, what we're asking for is professional service agreement with West Coast Arborist Incorporated. One of Public Works' operational responsibilities includes monitoring and maintaining the urban forest throughout the city. This work includes emergency response to tree emergencies, which have been slightly significant over the last two winters. West Coast Arborist also provides the city with arborist reports to make better determinations about tree health and a detailed database, which is used to determine things such as tree ownership, tree health, and pruning and removal recommendations. Next slide, please. West Coast Arborist has been the city's contract arborist since 2017. They have a strong background in dealing with municipalities. That's their bread and butter and that's actually the only thing that they do, so they, they're, they're very familiar with the municipal operations. The database provided by West Coast Arborist has proven to be very helpful to city staff and its proprietary nature would be difficult to replicate. West Coast Arborist has been very responsive to our needs and has consistently done great tree work for the city. And the fiscal impact for this contract was $100,000 and will be paid out of the Urban Forest Management Program, CIP number 0598. Recommendation this evening is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with West Coast Arborist Incorporated to provide urban forest management service for fiscal year 2024, '25 in an amount not to exceed $100,000. Questions?
Any clarifying questions, comments? Nope. Make a motion?
I hear an echo. I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with, with West Coast Arborist, Inc., to provide urban forest management services for fiscal year 2024 in an amount not to exceed $100,000.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick? Vice Mayor Rarback?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Sold. All right, moving on to a future discussion, possible agenda items. Going once, going twice? I got one? I am proposing that we look into something that's been requested by the community, something that we know, I know we need, a community park. We have a beautiful location in Hafun Bay that has not been utilized for several years and I believe we can look into it about having a community park. And this is a Beechwood property. He's thinking about building a nice natural park. It's accessible, it's visible, and it's an item that I would like to bring to a, to a future meeting. Beechwood.
Yeah, I'll second that.
There you go. So thank you. Any other future items? Anymore? Nope. Commission or community updates? City council reports? Nope. Going once, like that? Thank you for coming. Have a good night.